Welcome to the Monday, May 20 meeting of the Board of Aldermen. Our first order of business is approval of the minutes from the previous meeting.
So moved second.
All right, we have a motion to approve. It's been seconded. Any corrections or additions to the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next, we'll move to public comment where members of the public are invited to address the board on matters not on the agenda. Is there anyone who would like to address the board on items not on our agenda? Step right up, sir. If you could just state your name and city or town of residence for the record.
My name is Stanley Madison. I live here in Rutland City. I live on West Street, 299. I like to know what they're going to do about the drug house activity that's going on and the racing up and down the street and using West Street as a catapult because it's too high. It needs to be lowered. And not just that, but the loud noise with the exhaust continues to exist. And I was told by a city cop, there's nothing they can do until they hear it. Well, if they're out patrolling, they'd hear all kinds of them. Maybe they need to sit down there like they used to and patrol again and do direct patrol. This is getting to be a habit all day, all night. They race up and down through there. Just gotta stop.
Alderman Wickham?
Samuel, just a quick question if I could. Two issues that you're worried about here. One is the road itself and how people seem to be launching themselves over that bump, simply just, and then potential drug activity at your residence or adjacent to it?
It's getting to the point where now they're coming to do it in my do yard. And if you say anything to them, you don't want to because you'll have problems. But the noise with the cars and everything, when they come in, they come in flying, they go out flying. I got a neighbor that's modified all his cars. He's got four of them. When he leaves, he's right on the gas pedal and all you hear is noise. You can hear him when he's on top of the hill of West Street.
Quick call. So I know we have the chief here and I don't expect you to have any particular answer, but any advice, any direction we could give Stanley to report this, like any way he should approach this to resolve it or?
If you would. Chief's just going to speak at the podium so the folks at home can hear him.
So as far as the address on West Street, you know, this type of, and I've said this before and it's absolutely true, but things don't, investigations don't come to conclusion as certainly as we'd like them to and certainly as the neighbors who are being affected by this activity would like them to. We've had police activity at the address you're referring to for quite a period of time now. If you remember, it was, yeah, yeah, just, I think it's just a matter of months ago, there was a particular U-Haul vehicle that was towed, I believe, from the address to which you refer. There was some activity on the radio.
The other day.
And there was some activity on the radio today in that general area, as I said, but things don't happen as quickly as we'd like them to and certainly as you'd like them to. And you're there all the time. You're being impacted and seeing things a lot more than we're seeing them. But we are absolutely aware. We are dedicating resources to the particular address. And as I said, though, I wish I could tell you that, you know, tomorrow we'll have a, you know, the fruit of our efforts, fruits of our efforts will be felt, but I can't tell you that. You know, as far as the vehicles, the, yeah, you know, we, we've got to, we've got to really witness the infraction, the offense in order to address it. Now, we have, so we're aware of a particular business in the city that was, that was installing equipment on vehicles that was not, you know, illegal to install, but it's actually illegal to drive the vehicle on the roadway with that equipment and ask them as a responsible business owner to be aware of that. And there's not much more we could do about that. As I said, we can't, we can certainly address these things when we witness them, but, so we have tried other things.
Modified and resolved.
Yeah, and so that, you're right, it's not always a business that's doing that, but we have reached out to businesses that we're aware that we're installing equipment that's illegal to operate the vehicle with. So someone installing their own equipment that's illegal to operate the vehicle with is a little more difficult because again, then you would have to, our only recourse then is to really observe the vehicle and then issue citations. So you may be aware, and we did distribute this throughout the department over a year and a half ago now, Carrie. There was a new noise ordinance that specifically does address the exhausts that are modified. So, but again, it is something that we've got to observe in order to issue that citation. Now, up until a few years ago, before COVID, we were, and we're still doing some of this, not to the extent we were back then, using this particular model, but we were mapping out our crime and mapping out our car crashes and we were putting resources, doing high visibility traffic enforcement in those areas when these things are occurring. And the idea was the impact or the presence would tend to reduce the crime and the enforcement tends to reduce the crashes. So that particular model, we got away from during D-Dax, but we are sort of being, starting to organize a few more traffic, specific details targeting traffic enforcement type things. So last year, we, you know, again, because of the openings we had over a period of time, we had a sergeant on our community response team. That position wasn't filled. We did fill it last year and we tasked that particular sergeant, Sergeant Williams, with sort of spearheading some of these traffic enforcement details. And so I was just talking to Dave over here and we just did purchase through with a grant, a couple of speed detection devices. And so we've got to get those outfitted, striped, marked and get, start getting those out, but there are some other things we're doing. And as I said, I can only apologize that things don't happen as quickly as you'd like them to, but certainly not as quick as we'd like them to either.
Thank you, Chief, for the detailed response. Mr. Madison, it sounds like we don't have a satisfying resolution for you tonight, but we do hear your concerns.
Well, I needed to say, it's got to be addressed because
Absolutely.
We may rate something down through there, eventually somebody's going to wreck.
I agree. Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the board on items not on our agenda this evening? Step right up, welcome.
My name is Stacy Ludden and I'm a business owner in the city on Woodstock Avenue. I own 802 Nutrition. And from our location, we have a clear view of a lot that is not working on Woodstock Avenue. Today, I stand before you, a very disappointed business owner. When we started to look into opening a business in this city, we steered away from downtown because of the foot traffic, parking, all the logical things with the business that we were going to operate. Where we are now was very appealing because of the location, ease of getting in and out, the traffic going by, et cetera. Had we opened a business when the road diet was attempted last time, we would have never picked the location we're at. We opened five weeks before COVID and in those five short weeks, we got off to a great start. If any of you are familiar with the business that we do in this city, it's big, we're involved in the community and we give back. It was a scary time as a new business owner. We made a substantial investment in our location and when we had to go curbside, we figured out how to do deliveries, not DoorDash, how to do deliveries, how to reach our customers where they were at. We figured out how to survive a pandemic. But what you're doing to Woodstock Avenue is going to have us gridlocked and severely affect our business. We very well likely may not survive you, our city government. The mayor has publicly stated that he talked to businesses and that the meeting was properly warned. Based on the pushback you're now seeing, I do not believe that the mayor talked to very many businesses. If he or any of you who were here when this was pushed through had bothered to stop by my business alone, here's what you would have discovered. 250 people to 400 people a day entering my business. We saw over 200 people today before 10:00 a.m. in and out of my driveway. You would have seen deliveries going out. You would have seen your first responders there every day stopping to grab something while they went out to do their job. You would have seen an elderly gentleman who lives at a hotel, driving down the roadway on Woodstock Avenue in his four-wheel chair, towing a wagon behind him to get groceries. This happens four or five times a week. You might have even seen him try to go on the sidewalk and tip over and have to be helped up by a Good Samaritan and then take to the road. You would have seen people cutting through our parking lot because the lights aren't coordinated at Deer Street and Lafayette Street junction. You would have seen what actually happens with traffic on Woodstock Avenue. We have big windows. You would have seen what we, you would have seen that we need a crosswalk with signs on either side of it flashing lights so that people can safely cross the street. But mostly what you would have meant was your community that this affects and you would have been able to get their input that you didn't because you didn't bother to. You might have even realized that there are other businesses in this city besides downtown Rutland. Here's what you did not consider. Emergency vehicles getting through Woodstock Avenue. You'll recall that the fire chief spoke out against this plan. Fuel trucks and delivery trucks that currently park in the roadway because it's easier than getting in and out of a parking lot. They're already doing this and now they're going to stop traffic. Skier traffic, school traffic. What's going to happen when the line at Dunkin' Donuts runs out into Woodstock Avenue because people can't get into the parking lot? People are going to have to use the turn lane to go around them. You have not considered people's livelihood and you certainly haven't considered the safety of this suicide lane that you've tasked our first responders with trying to navigate a mess that didn't need to be made to do their jobs, which saves lives. I pay my meals tax to the city every single month and I pay the ridiculous annual tax on the items inside my business that I use to make a living that I'm charged on and yet no one could find me to have a simple conversation about what this might do to my business and other business owners. Why did no one take any time to come and see me or any business on Woodstock Avenue? You could have observed the traffic with your own two eyes, but you didn't. And finally, how is it possible that the mayor and the head of the Board of Aldermen know more than the DPW commissioner and the fire chief? You're making our lives more difficult than they already are in this difficult economy.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board on items not on our agenda?
Same concerns on Woodstock Avenue, except I live on Bellevue. I have two little kids that go to Northeast.
Can I just get your name for the?
Greg Runner, I live on Bellevue. I have two little kids that go to Northeast and I believe all you're going to do is drive more pass-through traffic down my road, down Temple where the school is and down all those side streets, making it more dangerous to ride a bike for a kid in the neighborhood and you're putting a bike lane in there. It's just, it's seems a bit insane. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Alderman McCann.
Can I ask a question? So I recently seen some information. So in 2014, when the project was put on, there was some traffic counts from before, during, and after. And it actually showed in some cases, side road traffic decreased during the trial period and other cases it was almost identical. So I'm wondering if that information has been shared with anybody so that there's data that could be going to use to reference the real risk here?
I haven't seen that. And I already know that they already speed down my road and whenever it's backed up a little bit, whenever it gets busy, more traffic comes through. So I'm actually living on it, looking at it. I've had family here when the 2014 stuff happened and we actually joke about it because how just insane, stupid it is, I'm sorry, but yeah, so I mean, I'm there with my own two eyes. I have a neighbor here with me. He's got kids. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Wickham?
Just a comment on this. So I tried to solicit a lot of feedback about the road diet, good, bad, and indifferent. And I will say, what Greg has raised here was arguably the most common theme that I heard of everyone I talked to, like how is this going to impact the side streets? I'm basically a neighbor. I live on Highland, so I constantly wonder, Bellevue, Highland, Temple, like what's that going to look like? I did briefly see what Alderman McCann was talking about in that in the five-week trial period before, you know, it showed a slight decrease. I think it's fair to say that probably isn't a large enough sample size to genuinely deduce what the impact might be over a long term and over seasonal variations. But I think what I would like to do is refer to the Public Works Committee, a discussion regarding accepted and verified forecasting tools that could be used to measure the impact of the side streets and a discussion on mitigation efforts that we could take in advance of this going forward.
I'll second.
Okay.
And I just have, so in talking with the city engineer is that we also have to look at the level of service that's happening or not happening. And I was here in 2014 and it was a failure for a lot of reasons that folks have talked about it. But I think we're forgetting another street, now Stratton Road. And I go to work every day on Stratton Road. And if you hit it at 20 minutes to eight, quarter to eight, you are sitting anywhere from Jackson Avenue to Allen Street. That traffic is backed up. Now, it's been a cut through for GE traffic for years. We have the school, we have the hospital, we have all the physician's offices around there, but it's worse. It's worse now. And so level of service has to be included in this to see what's happening on these streets. My concern was that we not make it permanent, but apparently in talking with the mayor, we have no choice. It's going to be a permanent markings that will be put down for this thing. I had asked the mayor, when we had the second DPW meeting and there was not a lot of folks before the decision was made, to please have a public hearing at the rec center and warn it so folks could weigh in. That didn't happen. I'm not supportive of this. I think we have to really think about impact. In 2014, we're talking nine years ago, there's a heck of a lot more traffic than there was nine years ago. And, you know, we're a direct route to the mountain, to Boston, to New Hampshire, to all of these sites going through there. The negative piece of this also will be that folks who want to go to Killington are going to bypass Rutland and come up 100. They're going to go another way. And we're going to lose that opportunity where they shop at Grand Union, where they do all these kinds of stops, at the liquor store, things like this. That's not going to happen either. So I think it's unfortunate that we didn't take a broader picture and take a little more time to have a discussion with the public at large. I think it's unfortunate, you know, this board, so folks know, we don't have any power over it. It was the Board of Highway Commissioners who made the decision. It's not a decision we could undo. We are just an advocate or a venue for you to be able to speak.
So Alderman Wickham, can you just restate your motion for me?
Ask a question first. It's of Alderwoman Davis. Would you, would it be preferable to you to modify the motion to include the level of service?
Please.
Okay. So the motion, as I stated, it would be to refer to Public Works Committee, a discussion regarding accepted and verified forecasting tools that could be used to measure the impact of side streets and to discuss level of services. That would be an amendment.
All right. And that's been seconded. Alderman McCann?
Thank you.
So to Alderwoman Davis's point, I've said this before, the concern about Killington traffic, I think Rutland's potential is greater than just being a highway for people getting to Killington. And you're saying that there's a concern about traffic backups and adding time to our day based on people trying to get up there. But with the build-out that they're proposing and they've broken ground on, I believe, I think their intent is to keep those people up there. I don't see a lot of benefit if Rutland doesn't have something to get people to stop here. So I think we just need to reframe what we are doing for ourselves. That's just a broad thought. In regard to level of service, we need to make sure we understand what that is. Level of service, as I understand it, was something that was built by traffic engineers trying to move cars as efficiently as possible and sometimes that includes speed. And level of service doesn't have anything to do with the comfort for other road users. It doesn't have a lot to do with safety until you factor in the safety of cars that we've come to manufacture with seat belts and airbags and crumple zones and detection devices. People inside the cars are very safe when we focus on level of service. But the people outside of the cars basically get forgotten when we're focusing on that idea of level of service. And thinking about Alderwin Wickham's proposal here and the idea that we want to look at mitigations, especially for side street traffic, I think that's really important. I think Chief Gilcullen, anybody that's been to any of the traffic meetings recognizes that a very frequent request is stop signs. For a lot of people, including myself, the first thought of traffic calming is a stop sign. So when you have a lot of traffic coming through a neighborhood, when you have traffic moving too quickly through a neighborhood, people racing, we think we need a stop sign. It's been proven, as far as I've seen and it's been told to me, that stop signs don't work. What we need is other traffic calming measures. So in our neighborhoods, we need those streets to be treated like neighborhood streets, not like cut-throughs. There's a wide range of things that could go with that and I'm excited to see what the conversation might hold.
So we have a motion to refer to committee. Alderman Heck.
This is an issue that's not going to be easy to make everyone happy. It's just not going to happen. Unfortunately, the safety is one of the biggest issues. Speed is without question a monumental thing. And if nobody agrees with this, I'll stop right here, but since COVID, society itself is just basically kind of given up. It is more aggressive. People drive more aggressively. People aren't as patient. People aren't as nice. Everything that's going on is just, we don't have the manpower. We're not able to do this. We don't have the funds for this. Laws are laws, policies are policies, stop signs are stop signs. Stand up on Hillside, outside of Little Dam's Daycare Center, look at the stop sign down on Hillside Street, six o'clock, seven o'clock at night. I'll give you a dollar for every car that stops because they don't stop. Then you go off to North Street Extension where they put one on the corner of Thrall Street to slow traffic down because it's a cut through there. They don't stop. I'm not going to sit here and pick on the police, but no patrolling has gotten us to this position where people tend to do whatever they want on the roadways now. Manpower, if it's short, it's fine, but there's other ways that we can accommodate that. We could hire off-duty officers. We can look at, is there any way that we can bring in other enforcement officials? A constable? Again, people that are in law enforcement that can be hired just to patrol our roads and do those kinds of things. When I spoke before this board back in January, my biggest concern was pushing traffic into the neighborhoods. People say it's not going to happen. There's data that shows that it was left traffic in 2014. I don't know where they're getting that data from. And if we're going to look at mitigation and data and data, 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 the data's only as good as what it's being presented to us. Where are we going to start for the data? Under new business, I'm going to make a motion to look at traffic patterns. What were we writing for offenses in 2018, 19, and 20? What happened during COVID? What's happened since COVID? I'll guarantee you that the decline in traffic violations is down. I just don't see them. I live in a northeast section of the city. I travel Woodstock Avenue, Main Street, every single day, going back and forth to work. The only time, when I travel to Northwood Park, every day with my dog to go walking, there's a cop sitting up there, patrolling because there's school buses going up and down. I haven't seen anybody patrolling our main highways in this city in quite some time. And I understand there's a shortage, but still at the end of the day, it's not okay. We need to do something to control speed. This is a whole safety issue. I wouldn't walk on Woodstock Avenue with my dog because I'll tell you, they're going up and down that place with tractor trailers and stuff. It is not safe. Is this going to make it safer? I don't know. I would never ride a bike. I have a ton of friends who are bikers. But riding on that portion of the road, Temple Street, was a designated bike path to utilize. It's a cut through to get you down to Pine Hill Park, drop you off towards Crescent Street, you go down, you utilize that. If people want to ride their bikes on these new bike paths, then how big are the bike paths going to be? You know, this so-called diet's not as big as it was prior to. So there are changes. Is it going to work? I hope it works. But I just, I don't see with society today and how they're acting and how people are continuing to so-called evolve from this COVID with what's going on, that it's going to be okay. We need to start enforcing our laws. We need to start taking back our streets and doing what is meant to be done. Write a ticket, plain and simple. Put a car out there with lights on it. Went to the National Park, Yellowstone National Park, and they had this Rangers car set up on this one stretch of road. Everybody knew about it except the tourists going in and I slowed down, I can tell you that. There was a mannequin sitting inside of it. But it worked. We need to do something.
Alderman McCann?
Yeah, thanks for bringing up the issue of speed, right? So there is a great correlation between traffic speed and the danger that comes from any resulting crash. So anything we can do to slow drivers down makes it safer. You know, fender benders are way less dangerous than, you know, high-speed T-bone, you know, at an intersection sort of thing. And to your point, you know, we need to slow people down, especially in the neighborhoods, right? I think the best way to do that is through infrastructure more so than enforcement, right? You said we are low on capacity. We're low on funding for that capacity for police officers. So if we can put in infrastructure that makes it almost physically impossible for people to continue racing, right, and make it inefficient for those people who are trying to speed through our neighborhoods, that infrastructure is going to do the job for our police officers 24 hours a day rather than having to put out a mannequin that the locals will probably start to treat like a stop sign because they'll realize it's fake. So.
All right. So we have a motion to refer to committee, a discussion regarding accepted and verified forecasting tools to measure impact of side streets and discuss level of service. It has been seconded. Do any board members have additional comments on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion passes. Are there any other members of the public who wish to address the board on items not on our agenda? You can step right up to the podium.
My name's Attorney Thomas Bixby. I am a resident and also business owner on Woodstock Ave., 152 Woodstock Ave., which has the other half of Hanush Jewelers. This is the first meeting, first time I've heard from Alderman Davis that this is permanent. The mayor went on record in the Rutland Herald to state, this is a trial period. We're going to try this diet. That was in the paper. Well, you can explain all you want, Mayor, but that was what was reported in the paper. No one came to my business. No one reached out. There was no communication whatsoever about this road diet. This is a bridge to nowhere. There are no bikers using Woodstock Ave. There is not. And where are they going to go when they get to the pharmacy? Where do they go? Tractor trailers drive up and down that road all day long in both lanes. You are going to be backed up from stoplight to stoplight. I take a left turn out of my office every day. I go to the post office, I go to the bank. There will be no way that I'll be able to get out of my office and take a left-hand turn. It'll be impossible for clients to come into my office or go to Hanush Jewelers. It's going to make things work, but apparently it's now beyond anybody's control to fix. Today, there was a fire truck that went flying up Woodstock Ave. How's that fire truck going to get through bumper-to-bumper traffic with both lanes plugged up? I will have to take the side roads to go to the post office. I'll have to take a right and then come up by Stewart's and go all the way around. So it's not going to work. It's going to cause more problems than what it's intended to fix. So I just want to speak out and I'm shocked that, to hear that this is permanent because that's not what was reported and that's not what came from the mayor's office. So.
Thank you. Alderman Wickham?
Two things, both very different. For the sake of us all being on the same page in the room, I would like to ask the mayor, if you could clarify, like permanent trial, like just so we're all working from the same.
Sure, sure. And I think that's what we want to clear up. So back in 2014, there's a period of time when the road has what's called a shim coat on it to the permanent coat of roadway. So that trial period, they could put down essentially non-permanent lines and then they can pave over that and put down the permanent lines. This time, we didn't have that option. This was a, what they would consider a permanent installation, just like Alderman Davis was saying. And with these lines, the lines will be permanent. What I was saying in the paper and what I will stand by today is, we need to try this. We need to see if it will work. And we need to let this run for a while based on the changes that we've made, which I'll talk about during my segment as well. And we need to let this run for a while based on the changes that we've made, which I'll talk about during my segment as well. But the idea basically being that at any time, if we get to the point where this is a failure and it does not work based on the data that we've been given, that we can undo that process. There is a.
I got to ask everybody to remain quiet. Only the person with the floor may speak. I'm happy to give anyone who wishes to speak the floor so that they can say what they would like to say. Right now, Mayor Dungus has the floor.
Thank you. So of course, will be a cost associated with changing it back, right? And I'm not, you know, naive to that. And the conversations that we've had with our engineers, with the state, has been to find ways to pay for that using grant money and interactions with the state. There's no guarantee there, but from the very beginning of this process, that was a concern because we were not getting a trial period, that we would explore that if necessary. So the conversation there is, as we are examining this, and trust me, I hope this is successful. I think what Alderman Heck was saying is, even though there is a belief that this won't succeed in certain areas, that if it is successful, that would be a good thing. If it does drive more people in your businesses, that would be a good thing. No one wants to take that down. There are so many studies that say slower traffic and slower roads increase the economic development of the area. This is data that we have been given, and this is data that we have found. So to answer the question specifically, because I don't want to run on, I want to give everybody an opportunity to talk. To answer the question specifically, the line markings that are being put down are considered permanent. They are an epoxy line marking. But we are planning on using this period of time as a trial.
Thank you. Alderman Wickham, did you have a second part?
Yeah, Attorney Bixby sort of alluded to this, and in the discussions I had, this came up pretty consistently. I actually want to make another referral, and I'd like to refer to Public Safety Committee, a discussion regarding risk mitigation strategies related to emergency vehicle responses on affected roads. I didn't list the affected roads, but I did take the time to reach out to regional ambulance, talk to Chief Lovett. I do still need to talk to Chief Colcullin. And there was a, without going into too much detail, there was definitely, you know, want to see it work, but don't necessarily understand if people are going to behave in the way in which the graphic that was released suggested they would, which is, you know, to disperse the sides, open up the middle. So I think, knowing that there is a level of concern here, it's a worthwhile discussion.
All right. All right, so we have a motion to refer to Public Safety Risk and Mitigation Strategies Regarding Emergency Vehicle Responses on Affected Roads. It has been seconded. Any discussion or debate on the referral? Alderman McCann.
So some folks that I've been talking to who are interested in seeing better bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure and policy, they've reached out to two different fire chiefs in the state who have experienced these sorts of, this four-to-three conversion, right? So going from two lanes each way to a center turn lane. And they've gotten letters from both of them that support this and say that it has worked better for their responses than the two-way, or two lanes each direction that had previously been there. So I'm happy to share that with Alderman Wickham to help inform this discussion.
All right. Any further discussion on the referral? Alderman Wickham.
Just a quick follow-up. President, I think that's exactly what we need. We need to hear from communities who may have tried this and seen it work. We also need to hear from communities that tried it and it may have failed. We can learn from them as well. You know, and again, I just reiterate, in the graphic that was released, people behave in the way in which you would suspect, which is people tend not to pull to the center when an emergency vehicle arrives. It should work, but I don't want to be dismissive of the concerns that have been raised by any of our emergency responders.
Any additional discussion on the referral? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Alderwoman Davis?
No, I'm good. The mayor answered the question. Thank you.
All right. Are there any other members of the public who wish to address the board? You can be next, sir.
I'm not a very good speaker because I've never come across an audience like this before. I've been born and raised in Robert, Vermont. I've seen a lot of stuff come and go. This happened in 2014. It didn't work. It was a massive joke. This is, I've seen the pattern, okay? I drove tractor-trailer. It's not going to work. Like somebody said, the bike path, that's a joke. You don't see anybody riding a bike unless it's during the races. You're going to cause more mayhem for first responders, fire department, ambulances. I just saw the ambulance try to get off Woodstock Avenue not recently. It took them 10 minutes just to get the hell off of just Woodstock Avenue. I drive school bus. I know how hard it is to get on and off Woodstock Avenue right now. I take and wait in line on Stratton Road for a good 15, 20 minutes sometimes. It's a joke. And anybody that votes for this to happen, they need to be taken off their position. I feel sorry for the businesses. They're going to lose money. I am livid. You're wasting taxpayers' money. Instead, use it for the drug houses. Get them out, the drug addicts off the street. The cops can't do their job. Why? Because their hands are tied. I grew up respecting these guys. And now I have to say, "You poor son of a bitch because you can't do your job." I have drug addicts in front of my house. I'm done. I'm sick and tired of having to look at them. My grandchildren are afraid to go out of this house to play. It's ridiculous. Waste money on this project and not take care of the drug addicts, but you'll set them up in a hotel or get a room for them somewheres? That's a joke. And somebody needs to get their head out of their butt and do something about that.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Peddon.
John Peddonee from North Main Street. Now, some of the folks here know me, and I'm a pretty shy guy. And I don't like to go at this, but, and I feel bad for Woodstock Avenue, but trying living on North Main Street and getting out of my side street because my driveway is on Clinton Avenue, so I have to pull out onto North Main Street to go to work or go to store, go anyplace. And I got to tell you, this whole thing for a bike trail is ludicrous, okay? I sit on my front porch. I can count on one hand how many times I see bikers come down that North Main Street. Believe me, you know what they do? They use the sidewalk. Every kid I see riding a bike uses the sidewalk. So instead of spending 30 grand to paint North Main Street, widen and fix the sidewalks so the kids have a place to ride, because there's only one guy in a racer that comes down here. Once every month, I see him come down my street. But I'm telling you right now, I live just south of Crescent Street, and you're asking for a complete disaster. I watched the Rutland Town Fire Trucks come down North Main Street, okay? Now, just before the light at Crescent Street, that's a hill. So if you're on Crescent Street, you're looking up, there's this big red and white truck blaring a siren, and they still pull out in front of them. Where's this guy going to go when the lane is full of cars on either way? He's going to go into the turn lane with a fire truck? This is ludicrous. And I went to the meetings that, the only meeting I knew about was at the Hub, and we went to the meeting. And I watched the state show their statistics and show their traffic pattern. And I said to the engineer, I said, "Wait a minute. You're only up to here with the traffic when the light is red." At times, at certain times of the day, that traffic on North Main Street is backed up to Hill North to the next street and all the way towards Temple Street, way beyond my house, and believe me. So you guys are spending this money to do what? Do something that didn't work nine years ago? We have more traffic here, more people. And I don't care what you say about getting people to come to the city. A bike trail on Woodstock Ave. and North Main Street is not going to get anybody to come to the city, okay? The rec department does a great job, what they do, okay? That's getting people to the city because they see what their children can do and what they can have. We've got a great police department. They need more help. And by the way, somebody who says they're not doing traffic work is wrong. I drive North Main Street to and from work, and there's usually a police car doing traffic stops up there. I see them there doing speed stops. So, "Chief, you're there. Thank you." But I see them there. I see the black and white units, and I know what they're doing. They're stopping people from speeding. So this is nuts. It didn't work before. It's not going to work this time. You're going to make a problem for everybody who lives here, and I don't have a business. I work for Salvation Army. It's up on Field Avenue, so I'm not worried about the traffic in front of my house. But as a resident, and the taxes I pay, take part of my sidewalk, widen it, and make it a bike trail. Don't do that to that street. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Wickham.
Not a question for John, but he made me think of two things. Just in all fairness, in reaching out for feedback from people, bike lanes were something that came up pretty consistently and not necessarily knowing, you know, how utilized would they be? But food for thought, an interesting thing that was raised by a few people is thinking less about conventional bikes and sort of the emergence of e-bikes. And do we have opportunity there is a potential positive, but I'll just, I'll leave that for what it was. It was something that came up from people supporting this. But then, I don't know if there's any plan related to sidewalk infrastructure as we do this work. And I saw it. Commissioner, so I don't know if in the plans, we're thinking of concurrently working on upgrading the sidewalks because this has been a long-running issue that they're difficult to navigate for people and potential opportunity.
Thank you very much. Lopee.
Wow. My name's Lopee LaRoe. I'm a local artist, muralist, and yeah, I'm relatively new to Rutland. And forgive me, don't be mad at me, but happy Bike Month, everybody. I'm a bicyclist, and people keep, please don't beat me up or stare at me meanly. I support you too.
Lopee, if you didn't follow our rules and address us, thank you.
Anyway, I'm not even here to talk about bikes. I have a different topic. I just want to briefly say that the reason you're not seeing people on Route 4, Woodstock Ave., riding their bike is because it's too dangerous. And I don't ride up there because it's also illegal, isn't it? So anyway, just wanted to say that. I'm not really here to talk about bikes. So I'm here to talk about Moon Brook, and I'm concerned about, so Moon Brook, I don't know how many people know this, but in 1993, it was declared an impaired waterway. And I'm really interested in revitalizing and cleaning up Moon Brook. And I think it would be great for the city in a lot of ways. It would create more tourism, ecotourism, recreational opportunities for people who like to fish. Guys are always walking, I live right by Moon Brook. Guys are always, old guys are walking by telling me how they used to fish for trout in there, and they miss that. And, you know, there are still trout, but they're mostly up past Stratton. So like, by the time it gets down to where I am over on Granger, it's, there's a couple fish. Anyway, I would like to propose to the Environmental Sustainability Committee that we add a riparian corridor ordinance to the ordinances. I would love to work on that. I had a conversation with Anna about it a little bit. So I just wonder if we can add that as an agenda item on the meeting that's coming up next, what is it, next week? And if, I mean, this meeting is going on and on, so I don't want to take up too much time with extolling the virtues of having a clean creek. But, you know, I think it's really important to kind of think about what progress, why is progress seen as urbanization and not like restoration of our natural environment? And like, that being what progress is considered instead of like technology and urbanization and all this stuff? So I, you know, I really would like to see us work on, I don't know what's happened with, since it was declared an impaired waterway in 1993, it doesn't seem like much has really happened besides people arguing about like, is it from street runoff, heating up the water or stormwater, whatever, like, or combination pond? I just really want to work on that. So I had a bunch of other things I wanted to bring up about it, but in the interest of levity, I'll just like request, can we put it on the agenda for the Environmental Sustainability Committee?
Alderman Taddeo.
So I will make a motion to send a discussion of Moon Brook to the Environmental Sustainability Committee.
Oh, and let me just clarify. It's not just for Moon Brook. It's also Otter Creek, and there's, what is it, Mossy Brook? It's just a riparian corridor ordinance, which would help us to clarify things about the various waterways, like what's public domain? What is the responsibility of the city to keep it clean, or is it the residents? And where can residents access the creek on private property? And these are different topics. And also flood mitigation, considering that last year, there was that really intense flooding. And so Moon Brook is in a flood hazard zone. So yeah, there's a lot of different things I wanted to say, but like, everybody like talked a lot, and I don't want to take up too much time with this. I just would really like to work on that project, along with Dark Skies, which I'm also very passionate about. So thank you, everybody, and happy Bike Month. Everybody, you know, if you ride a bike, the traffic will be less. I mean, it's kind of like one of those catch-22 things, right? Like, people keep saying there's too much traffic. Ride a bike.
Thank you, Lopee. Alderman Taddeo, did you wish to amend your motion?
Yes, I'm going to amend my motion to send to the Environmental Sustainability Committee a discussion of a riparian corridor ordinance.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion. It's been seconded. Alderwoman McClure, and then Alderwoman Davis.
This sounds like a very, very dense request, and I am wholeheartedly in support of it going to committee. But I feel like having it on the agenda for next week is a little soon. It seems like this is very dense. There's a lot to look into. There's a lot of information to gather here. So again, I wholeheartedly support it going to committee, but I just worry it coming up as soon as next week in our next warned meeting could be not enough time.
To some point, Alderwoman Davis.
So also, I mean, this has been, there's been issues with Moon Brook and Mossy Brook, et cetera, for years, and it's been the city working with the state for a number of years. Programs are already in place. So I don't want to reinvent the wheel. So hopefully, when it does come up in committee, I agree it's too soon, that DPW is present to say what we've done already instead of trying to do something else. So there's a lot of process in place now, and I think that it's more maybe some education to the public as what's happening, why it's happening, and then if we feel there's something missing, we can fill that hole. But I really think at this point, there's an awful lot of mitigating going on for the brooks through the Public Works Department.
I would just respectfully push back slightly on that because there's only two agenda items on next week's meeting. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. If Alderwoman Taddeo thinks it's feasible, she'll add it. If she doesn't, she'll warn it for a future meeting, but it's been referred. Any other comments or discussion of the referral? Alderman Gillum.
Just a short comment. We have to understand if the committee on the sustainability comes out with a suggestions for ordinances, that still has to go to another committee to get ordinances put in place. So this is not a little short process. So I just don't want people's expectations to be there because it's a two-step process here.
Very good. So we have a motion to refer to the Environmental Sustainability Committee, a discussion of repairing water corridors. Seeing no further debate or discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No.
All right. Can we do a show of hands? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion fails. All right. Moving on, are there other members of the public who wish to address the board on matters not on our agenda? Step right up. Just state your name for the record.
Good evening. My name is Robert Schlechter, S-C-H-L-E-C-H-T-E-R. I'm here to speak just briefly on the road diet situation. I'm here to speak just briefly on the road diet situation. I've made some comments on Facebook, so I'm sure some folks who watch that know how I feel about it at this point. I do have a very serious concern about emergency vehicle traffic in this scenario that's being set up. Be interested to see the letters from the fire chiefs who have had this in their community to compare it to what we actually have here in Rutland. I was fire chief here in the city in 2014, when this was tried last time. I also served as the Local Emergency Planning Committee Chair for years. And we've done studies, commodity flow studies through the city. The number of trucks, commercial vehicles that go through the city, might surprise folks if they actually sit at like the corner of Stratton and Woodstock and watch them and count them. A lot of them are coming down the hill, they're coming into Rutland and slowing down. Logging trucks and the like, there's a lot of hazardous materials that go through Rutland. And I would just like to see how these other communities stack up to what we have actually happening here in Rutland. You know, it's great to say if you're in a suburban community, one thing, but we're on the confluence of two major US highways here. There is no bypass. So almost everything commodity-wise comes through the city of Rutland and goes either north or south or east or west from here because of the junction of 4 and 7. We weren't ever blessed with an interstate or a bypass around the city, which the bypass has a negative effect of taking people around the city also. But the last piece I want to bring in here is a situation that, what will happen when the World Cup event is up in Killington? And at 3:30 in the afternoon on Saturday and Sunday, the World Cup lets out, a lot of those people are going to be coming down the hill and stacking. And I have a feeling they're going to be stacking clear up to Sugar and Spice, if not further, because of that. And so I hope that, I'd like to see those letters and I hope that thought is given to the fact that while it makes a lot of sense to have safe bike lanes for people, I don't have a problem with that, but it's what it's going to do to the overall traffic flow in the city. Part of the reason for highways is, and some people may disagree, but part of the reason for highways is, is for commerce, to get commerce from point A to point B. And a big part of commerce is not only the people and their cars, which is an important part of it, but we have mass transit, so to speak, for our little city. We have buses, we have tour buses and everything going up to the mountain all the time. And I think that the current configuration works pretty good, considering all the things that go on. So that's my two cents for tonight, but I will comment further in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other members of the public who wish to address the board on items not on our agenda?
Yes.
Step right up. You could just state your name for the minutes.
Lisa Lamb. I, my husband and I own two businesses, Speedy Lube on the corner of 4 and 7 and Speedy Automotive at 177 Woodstock Avenue. And I just had, I wasn't really prepared to speak, but I just jotted some down and I thought I need to support other businesses that are on Woodstock Avenue, even though this is not really my thing. So I had a few things. First of all, when everyone's here probably has gone through Woodstock, Vermont, and what's the first thing you do when you go through Woodstock, Vermont? Everyone knows you slow down, because they patrol it. So if safety is an issue, maybe more patrol cars on Woodstock Avenue. Because you know, like, I know personally, when I go through Woodstock, I know it's 25 miles an hour immediately. So that was just thing, and the lights are another safety issue on Woodstock Avenue. If you go up Woodstock Avenue at dark, you'll see some of them aren't working or they're spaced out and that's an issue for people crossing. So for safety reasons, I just wanted to bring that up. The other thing, and it is kind of directed to the mayor, I don't know if he can address it after, but I was just wondering, as a business owner, I didn't get any notice of anything going on with the road diet. Like, did the mayor take the time to come out to the businesses? And I'm sure it'd take maybe a couple of weeks for him to do that, but it would have been nice as the public to know that he went door to door to the residents or the businesses and just heard them out and just, you know, like, talk to them and see how they felt about it. I don't know about other businesses, but we didn't get that. We didn't get a phone call or we didn't see the mayor's face in our business. I also, our concern is, we repair cars and we have to test drive that car before and then after to confirm that it's fixed. So how is that going to work for our business? How are we going to get cars in and out in a timely manner at our shop with the traffics, the way he's proposing? So that was, that was a big concern of ours. I'm just going through my notes to see, because I was just jotting a lot of stuff down. But I feel like it's just trying to turn our town into a big city. And I don't know about you guys, but I like our little town. I don't, I don't need a big city, I like where I live, I was born and raised here. So it just brings up a lot of things. There's a lot of taxpayers on that road and it would have been nice if somebody came in and asked our opinion. Lastly, I just want to throw in, like, is there any support in place for the residents or the businesses on Woodstock Avenue? Like, is there any, any extension to call or if we have issues, where's the support? Is there anything in place for us on Woodstock Avenue after this happens? I'd like to know if there is anything put in place for that. I guess that was it. Just wanted to make it known that we are not for this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman McCann and then Alderman Wickham? Thanks. I know this is only a small slice of that comment, but related to the streetlights, I think the mayor had a citywide survey up online, looking for feedback from people on where additional lighting or too much lighting is needed or exists. I'm wondering if that survey is still up? Could you let people know where to find that?
It's on Citywide.
Okay, so on rutlandcity.org, right? There's a link to a survey. So if there is a need for light, and this, I mean, Woodstock, North Main, neighborhood streets, if you haven't heard of this, if you want more light or less light on your street, there's a survey, you can let the city know. Very good, Alderman Wickham?
So four things. First, thank you Lisa, I don't know where you went, thank you for your comments. I think a great idea to have like a very clear place to reach out to if there's any concerns that evolved from this road diet implementation. Thank, that was great. I appreciate like the very clear example of how she anticipates she'll be adversely impacted. I know this is one of the things I was really trying to solicit, is to understand, you know, I get the feeling, but directly to your business, how might it be impacted? And that is really logical. She raised a question for me that came up and it actually was relative to Woodstock, the town, which I think you were talking about. I hear a lot about how there's an anticipation it'll adversely impact businesses. A flipside comment I've heard was, if traffic is slowed and it extends the time in which your business is in the field of vision of a driver, does that potentially correlate to increased business? I don't have the answer to that, but I thought it was an interesting consideration. And Woodstock, Vermont is actually what kept coming to mind. I drive through it five times a week, well, 10, back and forth. And I know everything that's going on, because I'm going so darn slow the whole time. And then finally, I have another referral and it's, I've heard loud and clear feedback that people don't necessarily feel as though they're getting notified or know where to look for notifications for important public hearings. So I'd like to refer to Finance Committee, the creation of a, well, I wrote the wrong thing here, a mass media communication fund for the purpose of notifying residents of public hearings.
Second?
Second.
All right, so we have a motion to refer to Finance, a mass media, a discussion of a mass media communication fund for the purpose of notifying residents of public hearings. It's been seconded, discussion or debate on the referral. Alderwoman Davis?
So I just want to make sure that we look at what we're doing now, what we can do better now free, and how we educate the public, because is that the problem? Is the public needing to be educated or where they find this information that's currently posted before we start spending money? Because I'm not sure that we need to spend more taxpayer dollars. But we need to educate them so they know where they can find this type of posting for committee meetings that will be occurring. I know in the Herald, they're in the paper every Saturday, and Gordon's article, we have the city website. But I think the website people may not be accessing or know where to get them. And then of course, they're in public areas around the city, library, et cetera, et cetera. So I would just want to make sure we do that before we start spending money.
Alderman McCann? Thank you, I really appreciate this referral. This is actually an issue that caused me to start seeking out the meetings that were happening, because I realized it was very hard to find out what was happening in Rutland and it took a lot of hunting and pecking to find what committees existed, what they did, when they met, what they were talking about. I think there's been some improvement over the last three, four years since I first got here. But I really appreciate seeing a system that allows people to have information shared to them. Alderman Heck?
It's an interesting subject in regards, I've been working with Nancy Greenwood quite a bit from Woodstock Avenue area at Watson Realty. Nancy's been a pretty strong advocate in regards back in 14 and including up through today. In regards, you know, her Facebook page alone, it's over 1,400 members, you know, speaking of their disapproval. And went through quite a bit of searching out. There was a specific issue there that she was, kept referring to me about, if I would have known, if I would have known, the meeting was supposed to be here, it got changed to here and it was only an hour notice. And it's one of those things that just can't happen. I mean, open meeting laws are very distinct about how meetings are to be warned and the follow-through on how those things are supposed to work. In regards, I had some time today and got on the website and just went through and trying to verify how these things were. And no disrespect to Alderman Gillum or even the mayor at that point in time. Mike was only mayor for four months when this whole thing came about and it's a pretty big event as far as that goes. So, but I think there's a very big lesson here and one of the reasons why I ran as an Alderman is to make sure the public is informed, because I don't think they're getting enough information. So when I went through, I looked for a public hearing on the calendar. One public hearing, wasn't anything about Route 4 and 7. So I started looking for Route 4 and 7 projects, anything that was worn on the calendar. There was nothing there. So I'm saying to myself, all right, this isn't sounding too good as far as that goes. Well, lo and behold, after 14 years as a city clerk, I kind of knew where I was heading as far as that goes. And I said, what committee potentially would be holding these meetings? Did some research with the Herald and looked at some articles there. Alderman Gillum was mentioned as chair and I said, well, he's the chair of Public Works, let's go check out Public Works. Sure enough, there sat informational hearings, Route 4 and 7, AOT came in. I was actually part of that first meeting back in July of '23, when that first came out and stuff. But the regular layperson or a business owner that's working 50 or 60 hours a week that doesn't have the time to, you know, do what we do, this is part of our life. So we're used to looking and finding and doing those kind of things. But, you know, I don't know what meeting Nancy was talking about that stated that it was changed at the August 28 deadline when this road diet was basically approved by the Board of Highway Commissioners at 3:30 in downstairs in the chambers. Which, it just concerns me like it did with the other referral that I made in regards to the ordinance update and if it followed the proper procedures. Because people don't realize the liability that the city can endure if things aren't done the way they're supposed to be done. So I'm just, I think for the sake of safety for the entire city, I'd like to make a motion to refer to the Committee of the Whole that we look to make sure that there was no meeting on the 28th that was changed from 6:00 PM to 3:00 PM when this vote was taken. And it's very simplistic to do. And again, my reasoning for doing that is just to make sure that there will be no liability towards the city. Because at the end of the day, it's very simple. If someone was, you know, not very happy, and Tom is a lawyer, may understand this when I say this, but a letter to the Board of Highway Controls directed a city clerk stating violation of open meeting requirements and they're requesting a cure. And it's up to the city to make sure that that was followed and that those procedures were followed. And again, for the sake of the city and just making sure we're doing our due diligence. And there's no question that informing the regular person out there when things are coming about, this is a pretty big project. I'm not going to state my dissatisfaction on how people were informed or not informed. They're all here. I think the mayor understands that maybe there are things that could have been better addressed or more things that could have been presented or more input. Still might have been the same, they still, they still could have the road diet, it doesn't matter. But people not getting a chance to vet their concerns, be part of the process and for the administration to show true transparency, I think is a, is a, is a pretty big thing. And as the clerk for 14 years, I understand about how things in process are supposed to work. And it's, that's the way the law is and that's how it's written and it needs to be followed. So that would be my motion is to check to make sure that, if there was a meeting, that it was properly warned and it wasn't changed during the course of the day.
All right, I'd like to ask the city attorney if you have any information regarding that?
Yes, but I also wanted to point out, first of all, there is currently a motion actually on the floor. So if Alderman Heck could hold on to his motion for a moment until the other ones dealt with. But to answer the question, as far as I am aware, and I've seen no evidence to the contrary, that the open meeting law was followed in terms of warning, notice and the agenda setting for each of the public meetings that were set. You know, there, and I understand the concerns, I've heard many times, people have difficulty sometimes finding it. Again, that's why I think Alderman Wickham's suggestion is potentially beneficial and something worth examining to get notice out to the public. But I can confirm that based on my knowledge and the knowledge I've been able to gather prior to this meeting, all of those meetings in the open meeting law was complied with.
Thank you, Alderman Wickham?
Just to follow up quickly on Alderwoman Davis's point. With this referral, in full transparency, I understand what I'm trying to do is basically set like the two end zones. That this is what you have to do in order to just meet the basic requirement and this is what you can do to inform everybody and spend a fortune. I actually wholeheartedly agree that I hope we land somewhere in the middle where we find some easily accessible, no uncost prohibitive options to inform the public, but that they know where to go, they know where to find things and we can just do it a little bit better.
Alderwoman McClure?
I just wanted to speak on the motion that was on the floor from Alderman Wickham. In my professional career, my non-political one, I work in marketing, I work in advertising. And at the end of the day, I think that this is a great referral for the Finance Committee, because to get your message out, whatever that message may be, and I'm sure every business owner here knows this very well, it costs money. It costs money to get your message in front of as many eyes as possible. And I think really looking at that cost within the Finance Committee is a very wise decision. And to just, to bounce off a point made by Alderwoman Davis earlier, things like hosting in the Rutland Herald or hosting a website, those aren't necessarily free. Those may be significantly lowered expenses to a municipality, those are not numbers I am privy to at this moment. But web hosting and running information in the Rutland Herald, as far as I'm aware, currently are not free options, those are still costs incurred by the city. And I would love to be in the Finance Committee when this comes forward so we can know exactly what that cost is, because we are clearly currently incurring a cost and it seems that that messaging structure is currently not working.
All right, so we have a motion to refer to the Finance Committee. Alderman Gillum, did you have a comment?
Yes, I have a comment.
Very good.
I really do have a comment, because the mood in this room thinks that we did not take the steps and warn these meetings properly, well, that's a bunch of bull. Because this all came from the state of Vermont, through our agency, through the Public Works Department. We carried out three required meetings by the state to deal with the contract and it was run by the state. Because as part of the public hearing, when they come and do a major project, the state has to have a public leader and we did it together with Public Works, so the community could be involved. So there was three meetings, two here at City Hall that were warned properly. It was also warned with the state of Vermont, the state of Vermont also put it in the paper, was also warned at the district level, the state of Vermont district level, Rutland district. So it was warned in those three places, okay? And then we had another one, because we felt was not enough, the business community wanted to be involved, so they offered the hub and the chamber put a warning out that we had a public hearing dealing with this project. So let's make a out that we had a public hearing dealing with this project. So let's make it clear that we did do our due diligence and got the information out. If people choose not to read it or not follow up, that's not our fault. We followed the process the way it was supposed to be with the state, with the contract.
Alderman Heck?
So as far as the meetings, Billy, that were held on the 24th and I think the 14th of August, there's no question they're on the city website. The chamber, if that's the meeting that was supposedly held at the hub in regards to that warning, there are people here, you can argue with them all day long. They went there, there is nobody there.
I was there.
So.
Went to the hub, no one told us.
I don't know what to tell you. I'm just taking what people are giving me for information. And as I stated, this is about the liability for the city. This is nothing personal. This is if requirements weren't followed, we put the city at risk. And I'm not going to sit here and just be quiet about this if it wasn't followed. It's a simple question. It's a simple request. When this motion is done, then I will look forward to making that motion and then they can figure it out.
All right. So once again, we have a motion to refer to the Finance Committee, a discussion of Mass Media Communication Fund for the purpose of notifying residents of public hearings. It's been seconded. Seeing no further discussion or debate, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Are there any other members? Alderman Heck?
So I'd like to make a motion to refer to the Committee of the Whole, the, just to check and to make sure that the August 28 meeting specifically was warned accordingly per statute or the open meeting laws.
All right.
I'll second for debate.
Alderman Davis?
Just so I may understand, what meeting was that? Was that the Public Works Committee or was that the Board of Highway Commission meeting? I don't know what.
It's the Board of Highway Commissioners meetings, the ones that are held every Monday at three, every second, every second and fourth Monday at 3:30 PM.
It was a specific meeting that was supposed to be held at the hub at 6 o'clock is my understanding.
Alderman Heck, I didn't call on you. It seems there's some confusion here. So maybe having a Committee of the Whole meeting is an appropriate way to clear up that confusion. So we have a motion to refer to the Committee of the Whole, a discussion of the August 28 meeting and whether or not it was warned in accordance with Vermont's open meeting laws. It has been seconded. Alderman Heck?
I just want to make sure that I'm clear. It was not the Board of Highway Commissioners meeting on the 28th.
Okay.
It was the meeting that was supposed to happen at the hub, I believe through either Cedar or the Community Regional Planning, one of those. That's what I have been told.
Oh, it was a Public Works meeting.
All right.
It was a Public Works meeting. It was warned that.
August 28 is a Monday. I have the warning in front of me for that Board of Highway Commissioners meeting.
I understand that.
So I'm not sure what this meeting that you're referring to is, so I can put.
Do you want to speak on that?
I mean, we can make the referral and then I can research details on it in advance of holding the meeting. Is there any additional discussion or debate on referring to Committee of the Whole, looking at whether the August 28 meeting, we're not sure which meeting, was warned inappropriate with Vermont's open meeting law requirements? Yeah, Alderman McCann?
Thank you. So it sort of seems like this is something that, you know, between you, Alderman Gillum, the mayor, the city attorney, we can find that information and share it at a future board meeting. I'm not sure that we need to justify a whole extra meeting just to discuss this. I mean, I think the idea is to get the information and then if something is found that we did it incorrectly, then it seems like we would need to have a specific meeting to figure out what to do about that.
Additional discussion or debate on the referral? All those in favor of referring this to Committee of the Whole?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
All right. Hands again. All those in favor, please raise your hand. The motion fails. All right. Are there any other members of the public who wish to address the board on matters not on our agenda? Step right up.
So this right here was, I'm Nancy Greenwood with Watson Realty in Rellin. I'm a taxpayer with my business on Woodstock Avenue. I'm a taxpayer for my home. I have two places where I'm paying taxes. This is a perfect example of how confusing where the meetings were, when they were held. I knew of one meeting, which was the same day my mom was in the hospital having a kidney removed with cancer and obviously I couldn't make that meeting. The second meeting I knew about that I was told was supposed to be August 28th, the day you were supposed to vote and it was supposed to be 6:30 at the hub. But when I called the hub to find out what their, what was on the calendar for that day, there was the planning commission from 5 to 7. I'm just, I sell real estate. I don't know how, what group is what group and where, and I just go where people say, you need to be at this meeting tonight because they're going to discuss this. Again, I'm a business owner, Lisa is, you know, Stacy is, we're all on Woodstock Avenue, all going to be affected. If I was going to make a change to my house or my business, I would have to write a letter to all my neighbors explaining what I'm going to do and get their permission. Nobody came to talk to me except for Henry. He came to my business, he saw what we're going through. You know, it's crazy. We can't get, we can't even get out of our driveway now as of this. And I lived there 2014. When people are waiting in that line, nobody gets out of it and nobody lets you into it because they waited long enough and they're not going to do it anymore. I'm telling you. And in your, in your meeting on, on the 28th, I did pull that up and it said in there that there was, Mr. Mayor, you said that there was a 70-30 in favor of this road diet. We collected, us as a community, as a whole, we collected all these signatures of people against it. This looks more than 70-30. And I, there's a whole stack that I haven't even collected yet. I mean, this is a lot of signatures. You know, it's just pages. And this is for the Board of Aldermen. If you guys want to see this, this is some of the things that did happen in 2014. And I have a lot more that I could pull up, but I have a business to run, so I can't just keep pulling stuff up for you guys. It's just, I just have one question. How many in this room, can you just stand if you're against this road diet? 70-30, I would say it's the other way. Now, how many are on a business, owns a business on seven or four?
It's we the people, not we the mayor.
Or habit residents there.
Okay, Lobe, everybody. Nancy has the floor.
Excuse me?
I was saying that you have the floor to speak and that others should refrain from speaking while you have the floor.
It's just, this is just frustrating. We don't, as a business, we don't have time to keep stopping our business to fight this every 10 years. It's ridiculous. You know, it's bullchamp and all rooks. It's 802 Nutrition, it's Censor Secure, it's everybody on that road. You know, Irving Oil or what are they now, Circle K is against it, but they can't put the petitions in their thing. You know, there's Johnny Boys and Sewer, it's everybody. You know, I don't know if you found the few people, the few, very few people that are for it, but there is a lot more against it. And I really encourage everybody to join, just go on the group. You don't, you don't have to join, just go on the group. Four lanes are better than two. And you're going to see, just scroll back to 2014 and you'll see where the ambulances could not get through, the fire trucks could not through. People were going in that middle lane, they were going in the outer lane because nobody knew where to pull over to let them through. It just was a complete mess. The fire truck had to go through McDonald's just to get through one day. You know, and I just have one last question. Can you explain exactly how those lines are going to be embedded into the concrete? Like what is the material and how do we get it back out?
All right. So I believe the mayor's indicated that he'll address that during his communications from the mayor portion of the meeting. Sir, do you want to step up?
Mr. President, point of order.
Yep.
Some facts have been displayed here in the room as not correct. I just checked the calendar. We had three meetings, July 18th, July 25th, and August 14th was at the hub. So let's make that clear right away, that those meetings were warned, they're still on the calendar, on the city calendar. They were done properly and they were warned through the state also. So let's make the facts clear. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Gillum. Sir, can I get your name?
Yes, my name is Rob Toll. I'm a city taxpayer also. I was going to try to be here by 7, but I was coming back from Boston and I was stuck on 93 in a traffic jam. And it was interesting, they actually increased the number of lanes to help traffic get through. From four to seven, people are allowed to drive in the breakdown lane. They didn't go from four lanes to two lanes to try to slow the traffic down even more. That's just a side comment. Bill, as far as the meetings, was there, was there a lot of participation from the, you know, from city residents? I mean, was, was there a good turnout? Was there any business owners at any?
There was.
Okay. All right, cool. The question I have is with all the different challenges facing the city, you know, the increase in crime rate, increase in drugs, the infrastructure like the water and sewer mains that need to be replaced, the need for affordable housing, the need for more police, is this really the issue that we should be facing or that we should be working on? Or is, I mean, is one of our crime detection or crime defense to make sure that the drug dealers are stuck in traffic? Is that what we're trying to do? I mean, is this really the right time or what we should be working on? Because there's a lot of other things that, that are facing the city. A, a good indication that a city is dying is that population declines, but their costs still increase and it's not due to consumption. And that's pretty much like what's happening in Rutland right now. And the thing with, you know, being dead, you don't know you're dead. Everybody else knows you're dead. Stupid works the same way.
All right. Are there other members of the public who wish to address the board on matters not on our agenda? Anyone else who wishes to speak? Alderman Gillum again?
I would just answer his question. There was also attendance taken at that meeting and I believe I filed that with the report, the sign-up sheet. So if you want to look that up and on record, it's on record, it's clerk's office.
Very good.
I'm not trying to give you a hard time.
Oh, no, I just want to make sure that we did according to the book, what we're supposed to do and warned them the way we're supposed to do through the state contract. We did what we're supposed to do locally with the state.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Step right up.
Hi, my name's Zian Carpenter and I live on Perry Lane in Rutland over by Whites. I just wanted some clarification from the mayor, if you could, that August 28 minutes where you have the 70-30 percentage, could you provide me with some written documentation of a survey that was taken to get your 70 to 30? Because I certainly didn't get anything in the mail from the city of Rutland or try to find where I could voice my opinion. It almost seems like that vote was just pushed through. And I think for transparency purposes and for the better of this community, we all have to work together. And it didn't work in 14. And if we have to have the taxpayers pay the $200,000 or whatever to redo this, we're saying it didn't work then. It should sink in that it didn't work. And I'd appreciate a response tomorrow. Thank you. And also, I cannot go up Jackson Avenue to get onto Stratton when I go to work at the high school. I go up east, up Killington, so I can get a four-way stop so I can turn. Killington Avenue is going to be a thoroughfare and Townline is going to be a thoroughfare. This is not going to work. Thank you.
Are there any additional members of the public who wish to address the board? Alderman Whitcomb first?
Oh, sorry. Just something that Ann made me think of. When it is time for a communication from the mayor, if, if he could speak to it all, any information that might be available from the previous trial run and if it is, you know, available for public consumption and even some of the information that's presented during the public hearings, if there's, you know, potentially an avenue to get it posted on the website on the landing page. So people can see, you know, I know it doesn't change anything, but at least they can see what was presented, what influenced decisions and so forth.
Very good. Did you wish to speak again?
Yes, Stacy Ludden again. I just have one question. Was, so the state gave you options, was it an option to not do this and just repave it?
Yes, that's correct.
So I, I don't even know what to say. I'm never at a loss for words. Like I simply do not understand. And as far as slowing traffic down to come into my business, we, we serve the working people who come into this city and the working people who live in this city. They don't want to be messing around in that line of traffic. And I had two Rutland City firefighters in my business today that are deathly scared about what's going to happen on this and they're afraid to bring it up. This will be your legacy, the way this turns out, Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Gillum?
Another point of order, just so people know the dates are correct. The Highway Commissioners met on the 28th after the Finance Committee meeting. And that's a standard warned meeting every month. Am I correct? Yes.
Twice a month.
Are there any additional members of the public who wish to address the board on matters not on our agenda? Yep.
Not a trial basis on this one, right?
Not officially.
Not a, okay. So you basically are betting taxpayers' money on something that already failed and then we're just stuck with it? I'm just, I'm just, is that what, in essence, that's what happened, right?
I don't see that way. We can talk about that.
I can't have the back and forth. I have to give the floor to one person. They have to step to the podium and speak so we can record it. Right. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the board before we close the public comment portion of the meeting? All right. We will close public comment. If anyone wishes to leave, now would be a good time to do it. Move on to items on our agenda. Next up is communications from the mayor.
Great. So I took a lot of notes for those in the room and I do want to address road reconfiguration conversation first. To, I was going to go backwards a little bit to answer that question. When the state came to us, the conversation, and one of the things that I do want to talk about is the conversation was, in 2014, we did this. This is something that we're looking at doing it again, doing again. And I believe myself, the commissioner at the time, even Alderman Talbot said, if we do it, we're going to have to do it a little bit differently because it didn't work last time. So there are things that are different in this configuration. The state is taking time to do proper signage. They're taking time to do proper light configurations, to reduce queue lengths. They're taking time to properly pave the roads. And to answer the question about the permanency of the lines, I'm not a city engineer, but I believe what they do is they put epoxy lines down on the road and they actually groove the road a little bit to put the lines down in some cases, but not in all cases. So it's not buried in the road, but it is grooved into the road and then painted on top. I'm going to go over kind of what I heard, right? So I heard that ease of access in and out of stores, safety is a big deal, right? One thing that I continue to hear is that it's hard to get in and out of stores now with the speed of the vehicles that are on the roadway and people not letting anybody in. That the congestion is a potential issue, that bikes currently don't use the roads. This didn't work before. On and off, people getting on and off the streets has been difficult. And I'm sorry if I'm repeating myself, but I did try to take as many notes, that there'll be congestion inside of stores and that will cause congestion on the roadways. The reason I'm going over this is I want you to know, I want to say thank you for being here. I do appreciate that we disagree perhaps on this issue and I'm sure that we've disagreed in the past and we may disagree again in the future. But feedback is important to me and feedback is important to this board. As you've noticed, they've listened quietly, they've asked good questions and I think everybody really does want to interact and hear what you have to say. Back on the 28th of August, when we made this decision, it was a deadline that we had to make. We had to decide at that time. And the Board of Highway Commissioners, who actually did not have to have any meetings to hear this, we wanted to hear, which is why we had those meetings in advance. Now, I do happen to agree that the way we reach out and the way that we warn our meetings is limited at best and that getting feedback from people is very difficult. There are multiple challenges. There's multiple challenges reaching people in this city and there's multiple challenges getting feedback. And we are always trying to overcome that. So I appreciate that that's actually going to committee. I do also appreciate that we want to keep the cost as low as possible if we're going to do that. But those conversations and conversations like these we want to have and we are trying to do more. So thank you for the feedback. But one thing that I do have to say is when we made that decision on the 28th, decision on the 28th, we made the decision with the information that the data that we were being provided, the latency that we were going to see at those intersections were better than before, better than 2014 because of the reconfiguration, light timings, configurations, and the additional things that we did, like, for example, keeping the second lane at the Stratton Road to Woodstock Ave., or, sorry, Woodstock Ave. to Stratton Road transition so that the cars could still queue for the high school with leaving a pass through. Now, that may not solve all the problems, which is why I am very open to continuing to review this process as we go through it. I'm talking with DPW multiple times a week about this. We talk to Fire Department and the Police Department constantly, and we're having conversations with even the school about their traffic. So this is not a closed off thing, this is not a, okay, we voted and the state's going to do it and we're going to have to deal with it. This is something that we're looking into constantly. To go back to gathering the data, right, I had a very deep conversation with the Regional Planning Commission, and they're our asset for capturing a lot of this data and translating it from the state. That information, we actually put out sensors on the roadways for all of those side streets because that was one of the big concerns. The side streets that were going to be used, Temple Street and your street as well, and a couple of other ones, last October, we put these sensors out to look at the traffic, look at how fast people were going, look at how many cars were going down those roads. And we're going to compare that when it's done because we want to look and compare, as I think it was Alderman Wickham that said, we want to compare apples to apples. There's another piece of data that we're going to leverage, and I think this one is probably the most important to people when it comes to the travel time through Rutland. Maybe not the most important issue, but when it comes to the travel time through Rutland, there's a database, and I don't mean to get overly technical, but there's a database called INRICS. This is what gathers the GPS data from people's cell phones. And when you ever get the traffic alerts on your phone and it says it's slow, that's that, this company processes that. We have access to that data. We'll be able to run reports on the past two or three years, and we can do point-to-point. How long did it take to go from here to here or vice versa? And then we'll be able to run that again after this is done, to see how much we've increased, if we've increased and where we've increased, so that we can continue to look at that. So, my point is the, if nothing else, this is not a closed off issue. We will continue to monitor this, we will continue to work through the process. I do appreciate the feedback, even when you don't agree with me, and my hope is that as we work through this, that it is successful. But if it is not, we want you to come back, we want to have this continued conversation, we'll work through that. And we will continue to put that information online and in places that you can access it to the best of our ability and get it out there so you know what's going on. Any questions on that before I move on? So thank you all who came for this very much for your time. I'm going to finish my report. You're welcome to stay or you can go, but I just want you to, to answer these questions and concerns, I will post something on the city website by next week to address the individual questions. All right? Thank you very much. Again.
Alderman Talbot, sorry. As people are leaving, just so you know, I do know there's a lot of questions that were raised this evening, a lot of them are reoccurring. I do have a memo with some information on it to address some of those decisions. I've got 20 copies available if anyone wants to grab something to take home and cruise over on their way out as well.
Very good. President Talbot, thank you. Alderman McClure.
Mr. Mayor, is there a general information email that people could send to?
Yes, it's roadways@rutlandcity.org.
Okay, that might be an easy way to help get these pieces of information shared. Very good.
So I will keep my report extremely brief this evening. Lots going on in the past few weeks and we had the extra, the extra week in there, so I've had some great conversations with Killington leadership, both on the city side, sorry, the town of Killington and with the resort. We're talking about this upcoming season, and by this upcoming season, I mean the summer. What's very interesting is Killington's summer attendance is almost as high as its winter attendance has been, and they've generated an entirely new market, and we are continuing about, talking about working together. Killington would love to see us have a hotel down here. They would love to see us continue to have spaces for people to go. Back in the 90s and we were having this, not, sorry, the 1990s, back in the, yeah, 1990s, Killington was very happy to have hotels available so that people had options, right? It was a little bit more expensive to stay on Killington, a little bit less expensive to stay in Rutland. They'd love us to get back to that, so the conversations were around that. Couple other events that, we were at Healthcare, the Healthcare Expo at the REC Center. Thank you very much for the REC hosting that, as usual. Rutland Blooms was out there with DPW planting trees over by the Maples. That was fantastic to see those volunteers out there. We had the Wonderfeet Grand Opening, which is an amazing kickoff. Senator Peter Welch came and spoke along with John Cassell and myself and several others, and it was a great event, and it happened to coincide with the farmers market, so it was just nice to see all those people out in downtown Rutland. And then last Friday, we had the unveiling for Jessica Ebenhausen and the bench, the poem, and Jessica's corner as, the bench, the poem and the car, and Jessica's corner at the park, which is, was very nice for the Parks Department and everybody that was involved, including the Thomas', to really add that to our city and have a place for people to go and, you know, take a moment and remember Jessica in that place. And then that evening, we had the Peace Officer Memorial right out front here at City Hall. Best tour in my life seen in many years for people to come and remember our officers that have worked for and passed away for our city of Rutland. We had a department head meeting this morning, we held it at the Paramount, got an update from them about what's going on with the construction project. They actually expect to start Phase 1A and 1B soon, which is elevators, bathrooms and stairs, so you won't have to wait in line as long at the Paramount when you have to use the facilities, which is nice. Evergreen Cemetery, I think I need to take a minute just to give everybody an update on this. The previous trustees from the Evergreen Board wanted the city to take the property over. In our legislation in the state of Vermont, the city is not a shall, it is a may, that we take over the cemetery. We pushed back pretty hard. I have to say, give a big thanks to our Cemetery Commissioner, Tom Skiffen, who worked tirelessly with me to get together with local Rutland residents in the, in the plot holders of Evergreen Cemetery, we were constantly communicating the best that we could. The plot holders held a meeting, they removed the current trustees, they very quickly appointed new trustees, ended that meeting, and then they had a new trustees board meeting where they established a board president, a treasurer and a secretary that will hold their next meetings. Keep your eyes out for those meetings, I think it's important that a couple of us show up, obviously not to constitute a quorum, but to go and listen, to have the conversations. The cemetery is going to need some support. I think the city can lend a hand at a low cost, no cost type of situation where we can maybe put a little bit of labor in on a slow day and help them out, just to get them through the season so they can build their coffers back up, but we'll talk about that at a future time.
Alderman Gillum has a question?
Question on that. You know, I have no problem going in that avenue, but the board needs to take possession and manage it properly. That's what was happening, not happening in the past. We got all these other cemeteries that are doing really well because they are managed properly. That's got to be a key word with that, with the new group coming in.
I think what you will find is the people that took this over, their passion for this site is in such a way that they will do what it takes to keep it running and run it correctly. But I don't think that they would have any problem hearing that directly from you, if you're willing to share that. I think that's very good statement. Just quick update on legislation. Just at the end of the session, we saw Bill 879, which is the voucher legislation, pass, it's not just voucher, it's the whole extension of the General Assistance Program, how it would change, how it's going to affect us with the hotels. In the past three weeks, we have met, we being my office, Rutland Mental Health, Brock, State of Vermont, have all met to talk about what's next and how we can properly size these next steps for Rutland. It's very important. We're going to continue to have that conversation, I'll keep you updated. Bill 687 passed as well. I want to give a special shout out to both Representative McGuire and Representative Clifford. They stepped up. 687 is a perfect bill for Rutland when it comes to Act 250. It's Act 250 reform, it changes the structure of what we are able to do and how we can develop here. They, Paul actually didn't get to vote, but he did publicly state that he was in support of the bill, and Eric McGuire did get to vote, and he voted in favor of the bill and was the only Republican on record of doing that. And I just wanted to say thank you to them because they supported Rutland in Montpelier, not just the party, and that's a big deal. The TIF language that was removed and added and removed from that bill is very favorable now, so we should be able to continue down our process with TIF without any hindrances from that, and that's going well. And then lastly, this week, our CIP process kicks off. That is a public meeting, it is going, oh, sorry, next weekend. You're going too fast. Let me slow down. This week, on Wednesday, our capital improvement process kicks off. We are meeting with the consultant. The meeting is on the city calendar. If you would like to be there or participate remotely, you can do so. I think it'd be important for Board of Alderman members to at least take a look at what's going on. I'll try to remember to record the meeting, no guarantees, because hitting that button once we get going is difficult sometimes.
Alderman Davis.
So at what point, we're not able to attend and participate as a group, at what point will it come to us for input?
So it will be, I'll try to bring back reports on occasion, I'm the representative to you on that, just to give you updates on what's going on, so.
Right, I understand the updates, I'm talking about input. What we want to see in the plan.
I don't know the answer to that yet because we haven't had our first meeting with the consultant. But that is, once I know when that process will begin, I will absolutely let you.
Great, thank you.
All right. I think the rest of it can wait till next time. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Moving on to additions and deletions to the agenda, we have a request to add a report on the pension from the city treasurer, and I'd like to move the special event permits to the top of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Any discussion on changing the agenda? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, first, we have a special event permit request for the Eclipse Teen Nightclub 20th Anniversary to be held on October 19th. A copy of the request is on pages three to four of your packet. Alderman McClure.
Is there a representative of this event here tonight to speak on it? Oh, perfect, thank goodness.
I'm not the event organizer, but he was not able to be here, so he sent me a list, and I might be able to answer some. We've met with him. He came down to the REC to see if it would be a good place, and he does not live in this area anymore, but plans to come back to do this event.
Awesome. I just have, I have no issue with the idea of the event. I think it is an amazing way to celebrate something that was once here and maybe encourage someone to start up again another teen nightclub. What gives me pause is the name of the event and the fact that this is not an event for teens. The event is titled Eclipse Teen Nightclub 20th Anniversary. I think that is wonderful. I'm reading the event description here. This is a community event for adults 21-plus to celebrate the memory of this teen club, which brought a safe, drug-free environment to the youth of Rutland County. And then I see here alcohol will be served on the premises at this event. I am incredibly supportive of this event. I've heard amazing things about the Eclipse Teen Nightclub when it was here, from, you know, friends, older siblings and my parents, all sorts of amazing things. But what gives me pause is the name of the event because I worry to parents of teens in the community that may be misleading, and that is the only thing that gives me pause. I wholeheartedly support this event otherwise, but that's what makes me pump the brakes here.
I can take that back to him, and then report back. This is, we have more than enough time, so this is a good conversation, and I can bring that back and bring it back to the board.
Awesome, thank you.
Yep.
Alderman Todd.
Motion to suspend the rules. Yeah, I was going to, motion to suspend the rules.
Right, we'll consider that a second.
And I was going to make a motion.
I got to do the voting, I'm suspending the rules first. All those in favor of suspending the rules and taking the matter up tonight?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And I would move to approve the Eclipse Teen Nightclub 20th Anniversary on October 19th, 2024, from 6:00 PM until 12:00 PM.
Second.
All right, so there's a motion to approve, it's been seconded. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have a permit request for the National Night Out at Monsignor Thomas Connor Memorial Park to be held on August 6th. You'll find the request on pages five to six. Alderman Gillum.
I'd like to move to suspend the rules and take the matter up tonight.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to suspend the rules, it's been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Move to approve the National Night Out on August the 6th of '24.
Second. All right, Alderman McClure.
Just to steal Alderman Gillum's line, for the folks at home, I would like to ask the Parks and REC Department and potentially the PD to come up and speak about National Night Out. It's an event that's very near and dear to my heart, and I would love to hear them tell the folks at home a little bit more.
You do it. So the REC Department supports this logistically, helps get the word out. Colleen and Brittany do a phenomenal job of organizing. This is a national night out and has been extremely successful. We get great feedback, vendors are invited, and we're excited to host it again this year.
Can I do it justice? Yes.
Any further discussion on the motion to approve?
Just.
Alderman Gillum.
A comment for people at home. This is a great opportunity for all the youth organizations and all the nonprofit organizations that deal with kids to be there to support the police officers and our team here. It's a really good night out, it's a good, safe family night out, and I know the food is halfway decent, so.
Alderman Davis.
So I'd just say that over the years, the Board of Aldermen has been involved. We have been servers, cooks, scooping the ice cream, things like this. So I hope that, we're encouraged to participate because it's a good opportunity to be involved with the public.
Yeah, Colleen will send that out, and then I also wanted to add there, we are adding a touch of truck, so we're going to close a little bit and help with the flow going in and out of Meadow Street.
And there are plenty of opportunities for the Dunk Tank.
All right, seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of approving?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have a permit request for the 47th Annual Running of the Crowley Brothers Memorial Road Races and Events to be held on June 9th. You can find the request on pages seven to eight of your packet. Alderman McClure.
Once again, I would like to ask if there is a representative of this event available to speak tonight?
Alderman Gillum.
I am. I'm the Road Commissioner for the race. I am a volunteer on this event. This happens, this is the 47th Annual Road Race. We start at the Knights, we start at the College of St. Joseph, or actually, excuse me, the Regional REC Department. I corrected myself. Thank you. And then the other one starts in Proctor, and then the 5K starts on Route 3 somewhere halfway. So there's three races running at the same time, and they come down State Street into Rutland City, from the old Knights of Columbus is the finish line. And we close some streets down. So I'm going to vote for this, but I do, I am involved, so you should know that disclaimer there, so.
I'll move to suspend the rules.
Second.
All right, motion to suspend the rules, it's been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And I'll move for the approval of the 47th Annual Running of the Crowley Road Race to be held on June 9th. Road Races and Upper Merchants Row Finish Line Event.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion to approve, it's been seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And number four, a special event permit request for the Memorial Day Ceremony at West Street Cemetery to be held on May 27th. You'll find these details on pages nine to 18. Alderman McClure.
And once again, I would like to ask if there is a representative of this event available here tonight to speak on it?
So please, I'm.
All right.
See none, but Alderman Gillum?
John, John could not make it, the commander, he's out of town. And I'm also involved with this one too, so this is a great event for Rutland City. It honors our best who have served and who have lost their life serving. So this is a good event for all of us to be at.
Very good.
I'll move to suspend the rules.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to suspend the rules and take the matter up tonight. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And I'll move for the Memorial Day Ceremony to be held May 27th at the West Street Cemetery.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion to approve the permit request, it's been seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to reports and letters from department heads and officials, first up, we have Chief Lovett with a request related to the rebuilding of the ladder truck. A copy of the chief's request was emailed to board members.
In your packet, I gave you a summary of what's going on as far as our ladder truck rebuild, actually it's progressing rather well, things are going pretty good with it, except we have a bit of an issue, but I'll just give you a little background, we paid $530,000 for this truck in 2001. If I was to replace it today, we're looking at 1.7 million. I can't replace it today, because there's a four-year wait on this truck, so if I was to order it tonight, I'd have to wait four years, and the estimated cost would be about $2 million. These trucks are very expensive. So, came to you folks in September of '22 with a proposal to rebuild the truck, and that rebuilding is going along pretty well. Ladder's been recertified, it is brand-new, it's a 2024 ladder, new chassis and so on and so forth. The only component of the truck that we were questionable about was the pump and the transfer case, and after the truck has been torn apart, they start reassembling it, they find out that they're uncomfortable with the condition of the transfer box. Talking to many people about it, to not replace this transfer case and the pump today would be a mistake in my eyes, because it could be double the cost if it fails in a couple weeks after we rebuild the truck. So tonight, I come to the board and request an additional $31,125, that's above the $819,644 that you allowed me when we signed the contract for the rebuilding.
Can you repeat that? I'm out for me, chief.
I'll move to suspend the rules.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to suspend the rules, it's been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And I'll move to approve the $31,125 for the transmission pump assembly-
Yes.
-for the money to come from the Fire Equipment Replacement Fund.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion to approve the additional $31,125 for the truck rebuild from the Fire Equipment Replacement Fund, it's been seconded. Alderman Gillum?
I ask everybody to support this. I know a lot of you don't ride around in trucks, but I used to own a fleet of trucks, and I know how important it is to keep them updated and repaired properly and maintained properly, and people who are driving them. $30,000 is a very cheap fix to make sure this truck is gonna operate properly, and the people driving them are safe.
Alderman Heck.
Billy, could you just kind of explain for the folks at home the necessity, a lot of people say, why do we need two ladder trucks? And I know there's a specific reason why, but I'd like to just give you the opportunity to share with that, with the public, as why we're needing two trucks.
Certainly, yeah. This truck is different than our platform in a number of ways. First, the platform has an elevated platform, they can be raised, a large building, Sheldon Towers, for instance, you get to the top of that. The only problem is, is a truck that big can't go up a lot of the streets in the city, can't access the common house on some of the side streets if you have a chimney fire. So we've always maintained since 2001, this ladder, this 75-foot ladder is much more maneuverable, we can get inside streets, we can in fact put it in somebody's driveway, which at 90,000 pounds, the platform would crush everybody's driveway. So the serviceability of this truck, you know, is great. Once it gets back in service, we'll be able to not use the platform as much as we do. People all the time are calling up and saying, you know, you just brought the biggest truck you own. That's true, we have, because it was our only option, but this gives us another option. But that maneuverability is huge for this truck.
And if I may, just to follow up on Alderman Gillum's point, I think it's very important that the board looks at this with approval, because you just never know when something may happen with one of those trucks, and the city needs to have a ladder truck, so in case something does happen to go wrong with one of them, at least there's a backup, not that it's just sitting there, it is well utilized as far as that goes, so I think it's a small ask for something as important as that.
Alderman McCann?
Thanks, yeah, I support this in general, I'm just thinking about if it was my car, right? Like, you get to that point where you're just like cringing at every little repair that comes up. In regard to this additional repair, do you have a sense of what the service life becomes on that truck with the repairs that are now being asked for, but the ones we've also already funded?
Right, as far as the ladder truck goes, the ladder itself would be certified brand-new, so it's guaranteed as a brand-new ladder would be. Now with the replacement of this pump and the transfer, we will get full warranty value on the pump and the transfer case, along with the chassis, so essentially, we bought, you know, a brand-new 2024 for better than half.
Nice.
It's huge.
That's a great way to think about that, thanks.
Alderman Gillum?
Yes, I just wanna make sure people know how it works really well, because when we had the big fire on Baxter Street, they couldn't get the platform unit down there, so they brought the ladder truck in, because all the power lines were in the way of that fire, and they could get that truck right up to the building and put it out from the top. So that is a very crucial piece of equipment to make things happen in Rutland City, especially the neighborhoods where we need to have that service.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor to approve the additional $31,125 to come from the Fire Equipment Replacement Fund, it's been seconded, seeing no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, chief.
Thank you, chief.
Next, we have Treasurer Markowski with the Treasurer's Report for the period ending April 30th. This was emailed to board members, and that will be followed by an update on the pension.
Hi, everybody, I hope you had a chance to look at the financial report for end of April. Now we're starting to look at numbers and thinking about closing the year and the tax rate and how we're doing, so I'm going to just go over quickly, I took some notes as we were listening earlier, on some of the things that I really wanted to show you and point out. When you look at the delinquent report, when we looked at end of December, we were carrying 928,000 in delinquent tax balances prior year, now at the end of April, down to 741,000, so that's reflecting the collections and the tax sales that we did. You'll also see on the water and sewer, where at the end of December, we had 342,000, and then at the end of April, 272. So collections, as you know, I'm not sure if you've heard from books, we're in the middle of shut-offs right now, actually, we'll be shutting off seven, I think, tomorrow, so that's almost more than we did last year, so. But we've reached out and really trying to get ahold of folks, and we may have some before 9 o'clock tomorrow morning to settle up, hopefully. Pooled cash, in the pooled cash account, which is shared account, it's the only checking that, checking account that the city has, the cash account balance is $3 million, but I will stress again, when I look at the other, all of the proprietary funds, you'll see all of, when you look at the pooled cash, they don't resolve those due-to-do-froms. So when you think of that due-to-do-from, I try each time to add a little bit more to this, so we understand what it is, it's like, the water and sewer funds are running a business, they need a line of credit, so they're borrowing from the general fund. So I'm really taking some time in my office to review what happened that we're not resolving those due-to-do-froms. We already know in the transit center, I think from the beginning, we didn't resolve that, we've been carrying that due-to-do-from balance, and hopefully it will get resolved. And the parking fund, that position keeps growing, but the water and sewer, when I look at the water fund, I can see where actually it got, it's a snapshot in time when we're looking, snapshot in time, as of this date, this is the balance. So I kind of look, is there ever a point where the water fund, due to the city, is zero? Did it pay it off? And I did see that in the water fund, but I do not see that in the sewer fund, and I continue to think that that's problematic, and actually have a meeting with DPW to look at the calculation of the rate. I think we went a time period trying to like balance those two rate increases, and not increasing sewer rates when maybe we could have or should have to address some of the increased expenses after COVID, after we did the Fathom Project, we created a transfer from the sewer fund to the water fund that wasn't there before, and I'm not sure that we've properly accounted for those things, so I am concerned about that. So I did wanna highlight that, and then I will get into, I'll stop picking on DPW and water and sewer funds, because you can see where revenues are at 74%, expenses are at 89, so we're not meeting the revenue targets, but we are exceeding in expenses when we look at those funds. And revenues in the general fund, when you're looking, I kind of provide you with a summary. When you're looking at revenues in the general fund, you can see where strong, I'm really looking at those non-tax revenues, those are critical to keeping the tax rate down, so. I just wanted to highlight a few, where I really had a misstep, if you were looking, you said, where did she get investment earnings at 40,000? I don't know, I was kind of guessing, right now, we're at 164,000, so that's gonna help, so I obviously didn't budget very well, I'm always concerned about overshooting that, but I really missed that mark, so I apologize for that. Most departments doing very well, revenue-wise, recreation, with 601,000 budgeted and 841,000 collected for the end of April, but always keep in mind, that includes the transfer, that includes money that we collected in FY '23 and used in FY '24, so we'll have that transfer again at the end of the year. So that was revenue on general fund, and then expenses, they're worth, oh, I did wanna point out, I'm not gonna be at the next meeting, so I wanted to cover a little bit more tonight, because I won't be presenting the main numbers. When we set the tax rate last year, we set aside 460,000 for additional positions, so today, when I was preparing, I said, how much of that are we gonna be able to give back to the taxpayers? So I did a rough estimate based on the positions that were approved and when they were actually filled. One of those wasn't filled at all, so we should have close to 200,000 to roll back in to support the tax rate next year, so just thought that was interesting. So you'll see, where you see a department like the mayor's office over budget, you'll know that that is covered, some of that is covered by the fund balance, that's, gets a little tricky, the accounting, but did wanna point that out. Government buildings, I wanted to highlight that department, because you'll notice it over budget at the end of April, but I also wanted to point out, because you'll see these things, because we've dealt with them in the Board of Finance, there are some repairs at City Hall that are gonna cause that department to even go over by more. We need, there are things that we need that we can't wait, where they're unbudgeted, but fuel tanks that were flagged, red-flagged, so we need to get those, take care of those. The lift by the clerk's office needs repair, I believe the elevator as well, so that's about 15,000, but there's really no choice. And the other repair is water just flooding through one of these windows over here, I think.
The litters above the fire room and the chest, yes.
Yeah, so that needs repair, so you'll see those, and you'll, I just want you to know that they're unbudgeted, but they're going to be done, because they need to be done, so, unless someone has a problem. Mark is working on bids for those, and we've kind of given approval through Board of Finance, because there really isn't a choice on those items, so.
Alderman Davis?
I don't disagree, money to come from where?
It's gonna have to be fund balance, we're gonna have to overspend, yep.
We wouldn't use any of the ARPA funds?
We had just-
What was formerly known as ARPA funds?
Yes, there are funds available, but we discussed it at Board of Finance, and there was no decision to use that. But if you would like to make a recommendation, I'd be happy to use it.
I guess, I guess if revenue is there, and we know it's there, why would we, I guess I'll ask the mayor, because I don't know who else to ask for the budget, why would we overspend the fund balance? Why would that be a choice, rather than taking it from the funds formerly known as-
Yeah, sure, I mean, you could say it, you're absolutely right.
So we talked, we did talk about it, and you know, we've tried to use ARPA as much for expanding the reach of the community, right? We've got things like the Center Street RFP and a couple other things that we discussed that was, that could potentially go against that, so we're being careful. But the choices, the choices that we made on this is, these are expenses that should be under the city budget. In reality, fixing this building, this building is probably 20 years in disrepair, and we're talking well over $4 million worth of work here, and we have to address these things inside the building, so we, in the Board of Finance, just decided that to overspend that line this year, look at, you know, making sure that we limp it along to get through where we need to go, and that's the path we took, so.
So I guess, if I may, just to follow, we spent a lot amount of money from the ARPA funds when they first came in on community projects, but we talked a lot about what was left to help offset taxpayer burden, so that's why it doesn't make sense to me to not use that and to go back out and fund a community project.
I understand.
So I'd say we should then consider a referral to committee to discuss.
I'll move to refer to Finance Committee.
Second.
Can you just spell the referral?
So I'll ask Mary to confirm, so it's the buried oil tanks, the water issue-
The flagged oil tanks, the water issue-
The lift by the clerk's office and the elevator-
And the elevator, yep.
To fund those, rather than overspending the fund balance, to consider using funds formerly known as ARPA to pay for those projects.
Okay, so to simplify the motion, can we say just necessary immediate building, City Hall building repairs, right, to refer those-
Very well keep us focused on what we need.
-to the Finance Committee and how to fund those. It's been seconded, discussion on the referral? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So when you do have a committee meeting, I believe that Mark will have bids on all of those. I actually think the fuel tanks may take, like, those need to be done so that they're in place, so those might be done before the meeting, just because they have to be, so I think that will close out my report for that, but I did wanna point out, when Chief Lovett was presenting the proposal, the addition to the fire, the ladder one, we had talked about that not last December, but the December before, and we were gonna lease that vehicle. I'm gonna work with him, we have, if you look at the fund balance, we have, I updated it after the last lease payment, we have over a million dollars in there, we may want to consider an outright cash purchase, so I asked him to check with the vendor there and see if there, we could get a discount if we did cash. We have two other long-term leases in that fund, and they drain pretty much what we put in there, so. And when chief was describing a brand-new vehicle, I had read my notes, and I think the, it was estimated 2047 for replace, for replacing that vehicle, so anyway, that discussion will happen and maybe come to this board, that we maybe don't wanna do the lease option on that, so. Any questions on April financials?
Alderman McCann?
Ed, I am continually impressed with your ability to just keep track of all of this and try to explain it to us on a bi-monthly basis. Just, how are you feeling? Like, when you look at this, are you like, feeling good for the year, or are you worried about it?
I am worried about it, I'm worried, and I, a lot of it is, we don't know what that education rate is gonna be, so that's gonna cause the spike, and I don't really have a good sense for the municipal tax rate either at this time, so.
Okay.
I would be concerned for the taxpayers in Rutland, all of us, and what it might look like in July.
Thank you. All right.
Okay, so that was that, and then pension, we had pension meeting on the 15th. I just wanted to go through quickly, because we don't meet often with the pension, but did wanna share some of that information with the board. We had Lazarus from Empower present the financial statement, so when we look at the pension, we're looking, when Lazarus is here, we're looking at the plan assets. Do we have adequate plan assets to meet our liabilities? And we already know we don't, we're looking full scope at the entire city pension, the city side, the school side, and we have an underfunded position, this was the last value- This was the last valuation, it was twenty-nine million, with the city's portion at twenty and the school eight, eight and a half million, or that's the split, so that's what you're looking at. So we had a good discussion. We were going in the right direction, the market was helping us, so that's great, and hopefully it's helping more. So we look at the investments, we talk about the performance, we talk about the objective. We have a long-term objective, of course, with a sixty-forty allocation, sixty percent equity, forty percent fixed income. Always keeping in mind that fixed income portion, he's always looking at, do we have enough to cover those obligations for the next five to ten years? So that's how the portfolio is positioned. And also looking at that ten-year, we have a seven percent discount rate, which means we're hoping that we can perform at seven, seven percent. That's our goal, target goal, that we've kind of worked down in a five-year plan from seven and a half down to that seven. So when we looked at March of twenty-four, we were, that ten-year target was seven percent. Last year, when we were looking, that ten-year target was six point six five. So we've gotten that up a bit, and I wanted to share one other thing on, on the pension. It, I mean, and it's so great that we've been able to add that additional, we're getting closer to our, our recommended contributions. We're not there yet, but we're getting, like, we're closer to eighty-six percent from seventy-one percent now with adding that three hundred thousand from the local option tax. So we look at the pension with Lazaro to look at the assets, and then we'll look at the pension with Eric from Newport Group, the actuary, to really look at the liabilities and measure, and then we'll be looking at whether our contributions are meeting those recommendations. So I have a lot there. At the end of March, the pension had total assets of one hundred and thirteen million dollars, total city and, you know, the whole pension as a whole, so. Anyway, that was what I had tonight, and thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions on the pension? Thank you.
Reports of standing committees. First, we have Alderwoman Tadio with a report from the Community and Economic Development Committee meeting of May ninth, which is on pages one to two of your packet.
Committee members present were myself, Alderwoman McClure, Alderwoman Davis, Alderman Wickham, Alderman McCann. Others present were Mayor Dungus, Alderman Barbagallo, Treasurer Markowski, President Talbott, Alderman Gillum, Barbara Spalding, and Ed Boe from the RRA, and Gordon Tricillo. The topics were the RRA contract, the buy-up program rates of success, and the mayor's RFP for the Rutland 2050 Vision documents. The meeting was called to order at five thirty P.M. The first order of business was to review the new RRA contract for fiscal years twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-nine. Under the RRA contract, Barbara Spalding has been administering over six million dollars in grants. The RRA works on housing, FEMA buyouts, site-specific work, the Rail Gateway Project, hosts a TIF working group, and has been supporting the animated infrastructure grant application, among other things. The RRA also assists with land use planning and would administer the TIF district if it is approved. Alderwoman McClure made a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the RRA contract for fiscal year twenty-five to twenty-nine, pending attorney review. The motion passed, five to zero, and ISO moved.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the RRA contract fiscal year twenty-five to twenty-nine, pending attorney review. It's been seconded. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Alderman Gillum.
I just, I just want everybody to know how important this is at this moment in time that we keep this contract with the double RA. We have quite a few projects that are going to be coming off the table here in the next twelve, fifteen months, and you'll be getting that information as the documents are ready. So it's crucial that we have an organization that actually watches this and nurse it through the process and get the, all the money that we need to make these projects work. So it's crucial that we get this in place.
Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Next, the committee considered the success rates of the buy-up programs. Buy-up is the Business Incentive and Assistance Program. There are currently two options. One is a five thousand dollar grant, and the other is a ten thousand dollar forgivable loan. The forgivable loans have had a ninety-five percent success rate with only one business closure. The grant option, when accounting only for business success rates after COVID, had an eighty-nine percent success rate. Barbara Spalding noted that there had been a lack of recent interest in the five thousand dollar option and more interest in the ten thousand dollar loans. Overall, the program has been very successful, but there may be ways to adjust the program to change the loan or grant amounts. The committee considered whether to add an emergency loan option that would work similarly to how the buy-up grants had worked during COVID. These loans would have zero interest. Barbara Spalding mentioned that in the last eighteen months, there were ten applicants for buy-ups who did not meet the criteria for a loan or a grant, but that people are encouraged to come back and apply when they do meet the criteria, and Barbara Spalding will assist business owners in meeting the criteria. Treasurer Markowski reported there is currently two hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars available for the buy-up and that we are halfway through the funding stream. No motion was needed, and this report was for information only. Last, the committee discussed the Rutland 2050 Vision Plan document. Mayor Dungus presented the idea to the committee. Rutland City currently has an eight-year municipal plan, but it would be more helpful to have a twenty-five-year vision plan. This plan, once completed, would be used to attract developers to Rutland. Ed Boe from the RRA mentioned it could be used for marketing and as a prospectus to advertise Rutland City. There would be an opportunity for public comment and an attempt to include as many existing studies as possible. Mayor Dungus mentioned that in Massachusetts, it is standard for municipalities to have twenty-five-year planning documents and that they are very useful for multiple purposes. The goal is to put out a request for proposal and see who comes back to the city with an affordable option. The mayor mentioned the cost for the Rutland 2050 document could possibly be covered by ARPA funds. A motion was made to recommend to the Board of Aldermen to authorize to the mayor to issue a request for proposal for the Rutland 2050 document. The motion passed, four to one, and ISO moved.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion to recommend to the, or a motion to authorize the mayor to issue an RFP for the Rutland 2050 document. It's been seconded. Alderwoman Davis.
So I was the one dissent in committee, and simply because I, I understand, I understand the need for a business or a developer to come in and be able to look at a marketing perspective, et cetera. But I think that's something that can be accomplished with what we have in-house. So what do I mean by that? We have zoning, we have master plans, we have a regional master plan. I think it can be developed. I, I don't disagree that it's difficult to hand a developer maybe a hundred pages of this or fifty pages of that. But we have the talent and the ability to achieve that between the city, the double RA, Cedar, our zoning office, to put together a document, a ten-page document, without going out for proposal, without spending that, those additional funds, and accomplish the same goal. And I think, I, I think we have to consider that we have that knowledge base that exists already. We just need to format it, and I think with GovPilot and all the other things that we've invested in, we should be able to accomplish this in-house, and I will continue to vote no against this motion.
All right, any further discussion or debate on the motion? Alderwoman McCann.
Those are good points that Alderwoman Davis brought up. I, you know, we talked about the number of documents that we have around. I think if we, if we had the capacity and the technical expertise kind of in-house, we may, we probably would have already done it. So I, I think what we're addressing is that we, we can't kind of set a number of other things aside just to do this. And I know you, you were also sort of concerned with the, just kind of paying for it, right? There, there is a cost associated with doing this, and, and one of the ways that I was thinking about it was to have a twenty-five-year planning document with, you know, what we're sort of suspecting that the cost might be, comparing that to what we pay into the Regional Marketing Initiative right now, which I think somebody said was around fourteen thousand dollars a year. We're looking at maybe, you know, over the twenty-five-year lifespan of this sort of a document, it might be closer to a thousand dollars a year, right? So we, we get this additional long-term marketing tool at a relatively low cost relative to what we pay year over year to, to the Regional Marketing Initiative, and I, I think that's a good idea.
Alderman Wickham.
In many ways, I'm, I'm sort of in agreement with a lot of them, McCann, here, that, that all of these entities have been around for a long time, and the rubber has not met the road. Now, we have a lot of new people at the head of, you know, planning and zoning, the RRA, Cedar. They're good, talented people, but maybe this is something we need to go outside and find. And I, and part of what I do start to think is, okay, like, yes, there is a cost will be incurred, and maybe when we get back, you know, what this actually is going to be, we have to talk about where do we invest our finite dollars? Like, maybe we are sending more, like, in this direction and cutting down what we're sending to the Regional Marketing Initiative. I don't know, but I'll have that conversation when it arrives. The, the other intriguing thing that has kept me on board is I, I looked at some comparable cities, Park City, Utah, Freeport, Illinois, Fort Collins, Colorado, and they're impressive. They, they have different assets than we do, which should be expected, but I kind of want to dive in more to, you know, from the point at which that was launched for comparable places, how did it change the cityscape? What were the successes? You know, where, where did they miss? And, you know, I look at this as all sort of risk-free right now. We're not incurring any costs, we're just going out for proposals, so I, for the time being, I'm going to support this.
Very good. Any additional discussion or debate? Alderman McCann.
Fairly new to this, I'm not quite sure what the request is for. I know I've been used to the master plan, you know, being out there in documents I've seen through my fourteen years of community-developed-type things or projects or, you know, paying for marketing initiatives to do X, Y, and Z's. So it's not that I'm afraid to invest in anything, but there comes a point in time where what it is we're trying to do, are we going to spend our way out of it? Can we spend our way out of it? Or, you know, what's the best avenue? Again, if the RFP has, you know, no associated cost, I think that's fine, maybe to take a look at it and stuff, but at the end of the day, the wheel's been invented. You know, we have definite issues here. We have population issues, we have housing issues, those are going to be the same issues we have. We know where we're located, we're not going to get any kind of big industry as far as those things go. So we have what we have. The twenty-five-year plan sits about twenty-five miles up the road. That's where, that's where the economic boom is going to be. They're going to invest three billion dollars up there. Some of it's going to come rolling downhill sooner or later, as far as that goes, so that's just my two cents. I just wish I had a little bit more information, to know exactly what it was about, so I could make a better decision.
Alderman Gillum.
I'm in a very difficult situation here, because, you know, I'm a big planner, and I do like documents where business people can make decisions. But I'm also looking at a target date of July twentieth, where we have to set the tax rate. We are about to hit a wall here, because we don't know what the state, what it looks like from the state on the thirteen, whatever it is, point five on the schools. We don't know what the tax rate's going to be. We don't know a lot of things. And I'm very concerned, we're going to be spending money that we need to hold back until we figure out what's happening in July. And I only, I understand here, we're only looking for a request for proposals, we're not spending any money, understand that. But we also have to keep in the back of our head, we got a financial issue coming at us that we need to pay attention, and we got to take care of not keep spending and spending and spending unless we have revenue to cover it. And that is my concern here.
All right, seeing no further discussion or debate, we have a motion to authorize the mayor to issue an RFP for the Rutland 2050 document. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion passes. All right. Next is Alderwoman Savage with a report from the Recreation Committee meeting of May fourteenth. This should have been placed on your desk.
The Rutland Recreation Committee met May fourteenth, twenty twenty-four. The members present were Chair Savage, Alderwoman Davis, Alderwoman McClure, and Alderman Adams. Others present were Mayor Dungus, President Talbott, Treasurer Markowski, Alderman Barbagallo, Alderman Wickham, who I forgot to put on, Attorney La Chance, I apologize, Superintendent Peters, Director Don, Executive Director Boe, members of the public, and Gordon Tricillo. The meeting was called to order at five thirty P.M. The first topic was to discuss the Main Street Park updates with no action required. Superintendent Peters and Director Don briefly briefed the committee on the bids for phase one of the renovations of Main Street Park, coming in much higher than expected. They met with the rest of Russell Construction and scaled back the two hundred thousand-plus project. Will include updates to the gazebo with three-sided steps at a lowered height with no railing, providing three hundred and sixty degrees visibility, ADA-compliant ramp and pathway through. DPW will work with the Rec Department to pull out the old pathways and pour new cement sidewalks to help reduce cost. Construction should start the third week of September and be ready for spring twenty twenty-five. Superintendent Peters will work with the CHAF on the timing for the Fall Art in the Park event, and the use of the other green spacers farther down on Main Street could also be utilized. This topic will remain in committee to discuss if other phases could be added in the future. The committee next looked at the Giorgetti Arena refrigeration replacement. The current system is over fifty years old and well past its life cycle. It will cost approximately one point six million in total to replace. Superintendent Peters discussed possible actions which could be taken to pay for this project, including the use of the remaining Giorgetti funds, putting this on a ballot for a bond vote, and financing six hundred and twenty-six thousand from, with five hundred, or six hundred and twenty-six thousand down from the Giorgetti funds and paying off the rest. Mayor Dungus explained that in the Capital Improvement Plan, this project will be included on the list to determine where the money could come from, and it could go out to bond with payment from the one percent sales, sales tax option and not property taxes. It was decided that the finance, financing option would not work with the Capital Improvement Plan timing, and using the entirety of the Mary Giorgetti monies would still leave a funding gap while depleting an important fund for the park system. Treasurer Markowski explained over twenty-five, over twenty-five years bonding for this project could cost about two point three million dollars, but there could be energy, an energy-saving component to this that could change the cost. It was decided that this funding discussion would remain in committee and that it would convene later when there is more information from the Capital Improvement Plan. And in the meantime, Superintendent would look for additional possible grant fundings to support this project. Director Don explained to be able to open Giorgetti Arena for the next ice season, an update was needed for all the current safety systems, and the Rutland Recreation Department is asking for approval to spend up to one hundred thousand dollars out of the Mary Giorgetti Fund to update current safety codes and standards. A motion was made to approve the Rutland Rec Department's request for fundings, for funding to update all current safety systems to the current safety codes and standards at Giorgetti Arena for an amount not to exceed one hundred thousand dollars from the Giorgetti Fund and to send it to the full board for approval. Motion passed four to zero, and ISO moved.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion to approve an amount not to exceed a hundred thousand from the Giorgetti Fund for necessary safety system updates to Giorgetti Arena. It's been seconded. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And this topic will remain in committee for discussion on funding the Giorgetti Ice Arena refrigeration replacement. The meeting adjourned at six twenty-five P.M.
Thank you.
I just have a question, if I may. And Kim, if I could address it to you, I won't keep you long. So there's been a lot of questions about what the gazebo may look like, and I don't know if there's a way to get that out onto Facebook or somehow, just a basic kind of design to show that it's more open, it's more level, ground level, that type of thing?
Yeah, and we had done the community survey, survey where we posted this at the Rec Center, Goddick, Giorgetti, and then we did a survey. So the mass majority was traditional, keep it the way it is. We needed to make some adjustments for ADA-compliant and visibility. So we will put stuff out there. We wanted all of these meetings to be completed, and now we'll put it on our Facebook and put it on our website.
Great, great, thank you.
Very good. Moving on to reports of representatives, we have none. Reports of select committees, we have none. Board of Control Commissioners, we have nothing on the agenda. Board of Cannabis Commissioners, nothing on the agenda. That brings us to unfinished business. Alderwoman McCann.
Thanks. In relation to the Green Belt parking ordinance, I've, I've been getting a couple of emails lately from somebody who's like, kind of pushing and wondering why that hasn't been done. So just letting folks know, there is still interest in that outside of this board, and I'm looking forward to hopefully addressing it through charter and ordinance.
Very good. Any additional unfinished business? Moving on to miscellaneous motions, resolutions, and new business. Alderwoman McClure.
I just want to say thank you to all the members of city government and those who work within City Hall for coming to the downtown Rutland Zip and Shop last week, and also helping me celebrate my birthday the day, as it was the day before. It was in a. me celebrate my birthday the day, as it was the day before. It was an amazing time. I loved seeing all of you sipping and shopping and enjoying Downtown Rutland, and I look forward to see you guys at the next one in the winter.
Alderman McCann?
Thanks. So one of the concerns that seemed to be brought up earlier was related to emergency service vehicles going along Woodstock Ave. And where would drivers go? I think that there's potentially a concern about whether or not the bike lane could be used to move over for emergency services vehicles. I, I think that's something that would be completely reasonable, and I'd like to refer to charter and ordinance, just kind of reviewing what our current charter and ordinance says about that, if anything, and if we need to clarify that that would be allowable to help this project be successful. I'd like to take that up.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion to refer to charter and ordinance, a review and potential update of current ordinances related to emergency vehicles to where drivers can safely pull over if a bike lane exists. Okay.
About where drivers can safely pull over if a bike lane exists when an emergency vehicle needs to get through.
Yeah, it's been seconded. Alderman Heck?
Chief, isn't it by law that when an emergency vehicle comes, you have to move as far to the right as you possibly can, which I would tend to include? The bike lane, as far as that goes, if, if?
Yeah, you know, the ordinance has defined, defined what roadway is. But the definitions don't include a bike path currently. But basically, the roadway, let's see here, the street is the travel portion of the roadway, and then you've got the sidewalk, you've got the property line. So everything between the property line and property line is the street. The travel portion is the roadway. But there's nothing that defines what a bike path is really, at least in the definition of what a street is. So yes, I think it's worthy of looking at it. I know it's come up a little bit about where bikes, well, somewhat related, where bikes, and we mentioned it last, last two weeks ago, whether or not bikes can, can, can ride a vehicle on state roads. And so they're prohibited generally from controlled access highways, but merely being a state road, they're not precluded from riding. Although we have our signs, and they're somewhat faded, says bikes are prohibited. Starting around Dollar General, maybe a little bit further south on seven as you head north, bikes are prohibited from driving in the travel portion of the roadway, which would allow them, assuming that ordinance exists, to, to ride on the sidewalk. They can be operated on the, on the sidewalk if it's designated as a bike path by the chief, according to the ordinances. But I think you're right. I think it is worthy of looking at the ordinances, what's permissible, what's not permissible, what needs to change, and really clean it up.
If I, if I may, this is just kind of throwing it out there in regards to the road diet. As it's converted down, the bike paths are there. I don't know, Mike, if you, even if you're thinking about this, what's the chances even of removing the bike path? Not, not labeling it bike path, but just have it to be there as a buffer, because I know safety is one of the major issues here as far as that goes. There are designated bike paths, you know, Temple Street is, has been a designated bike path for how far it's going to be a bike path on that highway from, you know, if it's Bellevue Avenue to Hillside. You're not talking about a whole heck of a lot of riding that's going to happen. Where are they going to go? It's like the bridge to nowhere. It's the bike path to nowhere. Where's, where's it going to, where's it going to end up? I like bikes. I'm not against bikes. I just think it's a little crazy putting bikes on a so-called designated state highway. So if, if at all is a possibility, if that buffer can remain there, maybe they just don't label them the bikes and just leave that labeling off.
Yeah, so I'd have to check back with the state. I think it's a valid question. When, you know, the idea was presented, it was presented as kind of to the aspect of what you're saying, it's a buffer or a shoulder, but with, but it can be used as a bike lane. So I think the discussion, actually, if it goes to committee, I think the discussion would be good to figure out kind of what the process, the best process is so that we can properly notify people. But i- in all honesty, like, the, the concept being is it's not designed bike lane and then we design the road. We designed the road and this buffer space can be used as a bike lane. And I think that that, as we go through the process of what we're thinking about, will be helpful in that decision-making.
Right. So we have a motion to refer reviewing the current ordinances, and the discussion's getting kind of far away from that referral. So is your comment about the referral?
No.
All right. So we have a motion to refer to charter and ordinance, a review of the current ordinance about where drivers can safely pull over if an emergency vehicle needs to get through. It's been seconded. Any discussion or debate on whether to refer that? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Alderwoman McClure?
I would just like to, to close us out tonight with a remark. It seems in regards to the road diet, I'm hearing a very common trend thought, which is why would anyone bike on Woodstock Avenue unless they have to? I would like to put forth myself as an example of somebody who has to bike on Woodstock Avenue. In 2020, I was in a motor vehicle accident that broke my jaw. It injured my family members. It was, I'm getting a little shaky voice here, thinking about it and reliving that moment. It was very, very scary. From that moment, I, I developed post-traumatic stress disorder. If you don't believe me, I'm more than happy to put you in contact with my personal injury lawyer who helped me settle all that out. I have to ride a bike on Woodstock Avenue to get to my dentist. I have to ride a bike on Woodstock Avenue to get to the oral surgeon I was referred to after that accident broke my jaw. I have to ride a bicycle on Woodstock Avenue to get to my parents' house to visit. I have dog sitting clients up in that neck of the woods. I have to ride my bike to get to those clients. There are individuals in this community who need to bike on Woodstock Avenue because biking is the only way we are able to get there. And I just wanted to make sure I put that out, as I have seen some very disparaging remarks about members of our community who may choose to walk or may choose to bike on Woodstock Avenue due to the current existing hotel situation. I understand the idea, and I understand the feelings that many people have regarding that issue and regarding some of the individuals who may reside there. However, at the end of the day, they, this is a much larger problem and a much larger group of individuals who need to utilize alternative forms of transportation to access Woodstock Avenue and the businesses and the services that are on it. I'm more than happy to answer any questions about my experience being in a motor vehicle accident and being a non-driving road user who uses an e-bike on Woodstock Avenue at any given point. People are welcome to reach out to me via Facebook or via email. I'm more than happy to have those conversations. Thank you.
Any additional miscellaneous motions, resolutions, or new business? Alderman Heck?
As I stated earlier in the meeting, I'm going to make a request on the PD, whether it's a motion or if it doesn't have to be a motion, that's fine. But to look at traffic violations, tickets written, revenue incurred, 2018, 2019, up to 2020, you can skip 2021 for COVID. We all know what happened there, but where it's going. And respectfully, it's just, it's, it's, it's crazy out there, what's going on with, with vehicles on the main thoroughfares. My employment where I work, I get to watch Route, Route 7 all day long, people buzzing up and down, big Dodge Ram trucks, 70 miles an hour. I know it's, it's exterior to the city. But to do nothing is not okay. If there's, if there's not enough enforcement, if there's not the potential for enough enforcement, I would request the mayor look into alternative options to get a constable, to get Rutland Town PD, you know, anybody who has the ability to write tickets, because it's, it's just, it's gotten crazy out there. How motor vehicles operate now on those main drives, and the gentleman, you know, stated up on North Main Street that he sees, he sees police, you know, doing speed, speed checks there and stuff. And I can tell you, on Woodstock Avenue, if it's happening, I want to know when. Because my wife and her coworker are right on Woodstock Avenue. You heard people talking about how fast the speed is on Woodstock Avenue. If the road diet you're thinking is going to fix that, that's, that's one thing. But public safety is still, to protect and serve is part of the PD's responsibility. And people running stop signs, it's a common occurrence, and I think something needs to be done. So I'd like to just take a look and see what the numbers were like back in 1819, prior to the COVID, and, and what it, what it's been since COVID.
Is that a motion?
I'm not. Can you summarize what the motion is?
I was stating it didn't need to be a motion. I was making a request to the, to the chief, if he can provide that. If it needs to be a motion, I don't have a problem with that.
Chief?
I believe it was at a community meetings, we had a sort of a summary of what some of those numbers were. And, and yes, they were down significantly going back a few years. But I, I believe this year they're up about tenfold, if I'm not mistaken, on those numbers. But we easily get those numbers. As far as your observation about other areas of the country, where they use mannequins to, parked in a car, we're opposed to putting dummies in police cars.
You must have got a good night's sleep.
All right. Any additional miscellaneous motions, resolutions, or new business? Attorney Lachance?
Just one quick, and I know we've been here quite long enough, so I will be brief. I am tentatively slating a training going over open meeting law and the requirements in August as a refresher for everybody. I know most of you know it, have been through it before. But just to update everybody and department heads as well, to make sure we're all on the same page and make sure we are following the requirements as Alderman Heck brought up earlier. There is occasionally concerns. Are we following the rules? Are we doing everything correctly? Just to help us all stay on the same page. So if you have vacations scheduled in August and it's going to be a conflict, please let me know sooner rather than later so we can pick a date that works for everyone.
Very good.
I'll move to a jury.
Can I just make up a comment? I'm sorry. Did you know that the Secretary of State's office is coming down in June?
June, yes.
Did you open meeting law at the hub?
There's one at the hub, yes.
Yeah, through the Regional Planning Initiative.
Thank you for reminding me, Tracy. Yes, they are also coming down to the hub. I was going to do one specific for Board of Aldermen and City Hall here in Rutland. I believe the hub is open to other committees and others who are affected as well. But certainly, by all means, feel free to go to the one Secretary of State's putting on. I'm sure they will do a fantastic job and certainly have more experience doing it by far than I do, as they do this multiple times a year all across the state. So it would be a good one to attend for those that are interested.
We have a motion to adjourn. It has been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Matt?